Okay.
Okay.
We're gonna do the budget session, libraries up first, Rhonda.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks for your time today. Before I delve into the numbers that we're here to talk about tonight, I do want to acknowledge that we have one of our Board of Trustees members with us, so Becky Godfrey.
Hi, Becky.
Hi, Becky.
Becky, I appreciate her making time. We just had our Library Board of Trustees meeting last night, so it's two days in a row. She's making time for the library. But she is our Board President this year, so if you haven't met her before, I'm gonna make sure you got a chance to. The fact that there is a Library Board of Trustees can be a little confusing. Sometimes people, it's a little bit different than some of the other departments, so I thought I'd just review a little bit what they're about. So they're a seven-member volunteer board that the Council appoints, and what makes them a little bit different is that they do govern the library. So they hire and oversee my position, so she's keeping an eye on me tonight, so she's already working on one of the things that they do. But they also are able to make contracts, they have to approve all the expenditures of the library, which is part of why they're such an important part of the budget process. So I start working on the budget early because I need to take it to our Finance Committee of the Board to get their input and make sure that it all works for them, get their approval, then I get the Board approval, then I go talk to Jim, and it changes, and so then I go back to the Committee and then I go back to the Board again. So they are an important part of our budget process and planning, and then also implementing the budget throughout the year. So I appreciate Becky being here to continue to be a part of that. One of the other things that they do is set our policies, and they set our mission and our planning as well. So the mission of the library is to create opportunities for all people, to connect with others, to learn about the world around them, and to imagine the futures before them. And I see that as an important part of the whole vision of the city in terms of, excuse me, being a great place to live, work, and play. I like to summarize our mission as helping people find success, and that's really what we're all about. In 2018, the Library Board put together the most current strategic plan, and this too guides how we allocate funds, how we allocate staff time, what sort of projects that we work on. So I wanted to just put that in to give some context as we go into the budget as well. We have four main goals in our strategic plan. The first one deals with reducing barriers to access, so looking at our policies, our procedures, and seeing are there people that we're preventing from using the library? One of the big barriers is transportation, so that's why we look at doing a lot of outreach to compensate for that barrier. Developing greater awareness of what's available at the library, and increasing the ease of use. All of those things are part of that first goal, and we keep those in mind all the time on what we're doing. Goal two is that every child has the opportunities to succeed, and that's a pretty big goal. A lot of times when people think of the library, I think they think of the children's programs that we do, the programs we do for families. Tomorrow night, we have one of our monthly family nights going on at the library, depending on weather, it might get postponed. But those are all important pieces of what we do. Our mission is to serve people of all ages, all people in the community, but I think the children's programming is a big piece of that, and is why a lot of people know us for that. And it's not just the young children that we do the early literacy classes for, it's those teens too. Having a safe, welcoming, productive place for teens to come is a big piece of what we do, and tonight we have a program for teens going on. So we try to always have something available for them, as well as other ages, but that goal two is always center in our mind as well as we're planning. Technology is goal three, and that is to provide access to technology as well as providing assistance with technology. It's all about bridging the digital divide, so that all members of our community have the technology access they need to really be productive and successful. It's becoming more and more of a need and not a want to have that technology access. And goal four is to be sustainable, to look at ways that we can collaborate and use technology and enhance our services by being efficient and streamlining services. So one example I want to give is just happened today and hits two of these goals. So in terms of ease of use, and then also leveraging technology to make the library a better place, streamline things. We just got our two new self-check stations up and running today, and I say "we," really Lois did all the work. Our IT person spent hours getting all that going, but they're easier to use than we had before, and they replaced the really old unpredictable ones that were 13 years old. So they will make things easier for people to use, and we are using technology to streamline things. So all those kinds of things come into play, and that all, again, fits into a little background for how we look at the budget. So now to jump into the numbers that you've been waiting for. There we go. So in this proposed budget, the budget documents you have in front of you can see is expenditures. Here, this represents a 1.8% increase from the current fiscal year. It also is maintaining all current staffing levels, service levels. There is really nothing new in this budget in terms of things we're asking for. So you can also see from those sheets, though, that the only increase, or the big increase, is in personnel services. Again, it's not because we're adding anything, it's just as when Jim talked about on the first night with the overview of the budget, these are the increases that every department is seeing for union, non-union, pay increases, as well as the insurance increase, those kind of things. Now, Jim asked us to keep our budget at 1.8% total increase, so to do that, because the personnel is over that, we did make some adjustments in the non-personnel section. I'll talk more about that when we get to that part of it, but just to give you some idea of where we ended up making some cuts to the budget this year. So expenditure history, I always like to give a little context for where we're at with our expenditures. You can see here that our current expenditures, we're asking for fiscal year '21, fall almost about, a little below what we had fiscal year '09. So our expenditures are still a little less than they were 12 years ago. And you can see there where the budget cuts came before and how it's just been kind of a slow and steady, small increases over the last few years. In terms of revenue side of things, it has been pretty steady for quite a few years now. The bump up there, though, represents, when I mentioned earlier about how we can contract with other communities, and the Library Board does that contracting, the change was that we went to 10-year, 20-year agreements with the other entities. So West Burlington, Middletown, and Des Moines County have 10-year agreements with us. Previous to that, they did it on an annual basis, and so it fluctuated year to year. We changed the formula, went into this longer-term contract with them, and I think that's really been good for everyone involved, including the community members. So users, the community members, know that they're gonna have access year to year. It's not a question each year what's gonna happen, and it makes it easier for them to continue using library services, much more consistent for them. But it's also more consistent for those entities in terms of planning for their budgets. They know what to expect, they know what it's gonna be over the next 10 years, and we have a more predictable revenue as well, so it's not a question mark every year. Those agreements do run at the end of fiscal year '22, so we still have another year before those will end, and we'll need to go back to them. But you can see here, too, that our revenues are up from what they used to be, just small increases there. So when you take the expenditures and the revenues and put all that together, you get the general fund impact. And so, again, to give some perspective, our general fund impact is less than it was 12 years ago. Part of that's the cuts, and part of that is that revenue increase that we had by stabilizing that revenue. So I mentioned that personnel is our biggest cost driver for our budget, as it is for all departments, I know, and we are not making any changes. The 16.9 FTE is, you can see on that first page, that's what it's been for several years now. And so this just gives you a breakdown of what that looks like. Again, just more perspective on that, some history. So I started working at the library in fiscal year '02, so I start there. That was when they had nearly 22 FTE on staff, and we now are almost to 17, so about a five, equivalent of five full-time positions have been reduced. So those budget cuts that we had, a lot of what we were able to do was through attrition, make changes to staffing. Thankfully, we didn't have to do any layoffs in that period. We had some people who were retiring and were able to make some changes. One of the changes that happened is a kind of a shift in balance. We have more part-time staff members now than we do full-time staff members, and our part-time staff members work 20 hours or less a week. So I said, we're down equivalent of five full-time people, and we've not changed, that hasn't changed since we went down, as you can see, pretty straight across there. And at the same time, since we moved to the new building at the end of fiscal year '06, we have seen increased use. We have a larger area to monitor, those sort of things. So the staff is clearly doing more with less. One of the things, though, with moving is that the building has some efficiencies to it that we're able to make use of. Not just those self-check machines that allow people to do some of those things themselves, but the layout of the building itself, too, being all on one floor. In the old facility, we had two circulation desks, one at the lower level where the kids were at, and one on the main floor. We now just have one, and so that makes that a little easier in terms of staffing. We also, as a way to manage the budget cuts, did take our youth services desk, and we only staff that during the summer, when we have summer reading program going on. So changed up some staffing there. When it comes to shelving, too, we have four shelveurs who work very part-time. One only works four to eight hours a week, so they don't work a whole lot of hours. We used to have more shelveurs and more hours devoted to shelving because we were on two floors. So we had to have shelveurs dedicated to each of the floors, and on our main floor, we had those glass floors, which were really cool, but there was, the only way to get up there was some narrow steps, and you had to carry the books in your arms to go up and shelf. So now, we can push a cart to every shelf, all on the one floor, so that's an area that we were able to have some efficiencies as well. Also, thanks to our Library Foundation, when we moved to the new facility, we converted to RFID tags in our materials, and that allows us to check out much more efficiently than we used to. We don't have to open each book and wand a barcode, we can just lay a book down on the pad, and so that helps quite a bit. We did, in part of that budget, changes that we had, we did eliminate four hours a week by closing at 8:00 instead of 9:00 most weeks of the year. And so they're just an idea of some of the reasons that we've been able to try to keep going and keep working at the level that we're at and still offer excellence in service, which is always our goal. The most important reason we're able to do that, though, is the remarkable team of staff members that we have. They're very dedicated to service, they're creative, they believe in the power of libraries, to have an impact in transforming people's lives and helping people be successful, and so that is our most important resource and one that we need to invest in. At the same time, it is important to recognize that by eliminating some of these positions, we did have to change some things up. So the responsibilities for maintenance and janitorial services, we contract out for janitorial services, we use property maintenance for maintenance, but there's still some of that that falls on staff members who are in the building every day, and so that has changed. We did reduce our office coordinator to only 20 hours per week rather than full-time. That's a change. We don't have somebody in the building on a regular basis. We also went from four to only three supervisors, and so we're always kind of adjusting to that. And I know sometimes when you make changes, at the time, it seems like, oh, you know, this'll work, and down the road, you go, oh, I really see why, I wish we still had that position. So we definitely do feel the lack of some of those positions, but as I said, we've got a remarkable staff, and we all work together as a great team, so continue to do the good work that we can. So just to give you an overview of what the staff members do, we have two people, one and a half FTE, who are administration. That's me and our 20-hour office coordinator. So we handle a lot of the behind-the-scenes things that go on at the library. I should include troubleshooting on there. It seems like most of my days are troubleshooting, running around, answering things that need to be done. But all those other things are also part of our area that we do. So we, last year, looked at this, we looked at it again this year. It wasn't possible with trying to keep it a 1.8% increase in our budget. We would like to increase the office coordinator position, the 20 hours a week. I think she's great. As many of you know, the secretary, administrative assistant, whatever you call that person in an office is a very important position, and really makes a difference in what gets done. So we would like to have more time for her to be able to coordinate projects. We recognize that's not a possibility this year, but I'll probably just keep bringing it up every year because it is something we'd like to slowly add to that if we can. Our community and customer services, or public services, as we call it, this one, we kind of keep changing names on what to call this, but this is all the frontline activity. And really, every staff member works in this section in a way, because all of us end up working frontline desk time. I work, there have been a few Monday nights I haven't been here, that's because we were short-staffed on Monday nights, I was working at the help desk, or, you know, and I do shifts like that on a regular basis. And every staff member, except for our office coordinator, ends up working either at the help desk or the customer service desk at some point during the week. So the people, though, that are dedicated to this section, and this is where they're assigned, do all kinds of other duties besides just the being out at the front desk and serving people. And so that's some of the things I've listed here, like our homebound delivery, coordinating that, offering the classes that we have for adults, working with people who are doing local history and genealogy research. It always takes a little more time, so setting up one-on-one technology times with people, and our interlibrary loan as well. So lots of different things that they cover. Talked about why youth and family services, it's a big part of our strategic plan, it's a big part of what we do and are known for. So we have five people that work in that area, two of them are 20-hour a week, so only four FTE, and they do an amazing amount of stuff. When I look at this list, we have so many things that they do in terms of weekly classes, the outreach that they do, they're off and out of the building, doing things and going into the schools. So I always have a hard time during this, not talking about those things as much, but I did just do our annual report back in November. So I handed out for our new council members a copy of that annual report. I love to talk about all the different programs that we offer. So if you, or any of you, ever want to come and talk about any of those, ask questions, get a tour, or see what's new going at the library, I am happy to do that anytime, but I won't spend a lot of time on that tonight. Technology and collection services, this is one that used to be two different sections in the library, and we had a person who left to take another job, and we combined these two. So our IT person, Lois, who was spending all day with our self-check machines, she took on the collection development aspect of what we do. So that includes choosing what goes into the collection, but also cataloging it, processing it, getting it ready, as well as putting it back on the shelf, so all the shelveurs are in this section as well. And we have so many computers with, we have 33 public computers, 17 mobile hotspots, seven catalog computers, eight youth computers. We check out laptops from the help desk, we have laptops we use in the meeting rooms, all the staff workstations. So she really stays very busy with the IT aspect of it, and the other people who work in that section with her take on most of the other obligations for that section. So that's the personnel section, and then I know on those sheets, they break it into two different things, contractual services and commodities. I lumped it all together. It's all operational stuff to me, the non-personnel stuff, so I'm gonna just put that together into one number here. But to give you some history on that, as I mentioned, it's very difficult to make changes in budget without impacting personnel, and when we did budget adjustments in the past, we did go down in personnel. To keep that going, though, because personnel costs are what they are, each year to keep that total down, it does typically mean we don't go up at all in operational. So you can see for the last few years, very steady line there. And, you know, so I'll talk about a few of the ways in which we did that this year. So we are always looking at that non-personnel expense to see what can we do here to continue to reduce expenses wherever possible. So actually, our operational expense, this part of our expenditures is well under what it was 15 years ago, and I only went back that far in here, so.
Hey Rhonda, real quick, what's heating fuel? I mean, I know what it is, but why are we doing budget?
It's a separate line on the budget, but that's, you know, we get two Alliant bills. We get one that's the lights and one that's the heat, one's the gas.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it's electricity and then gas, yeah.
I'm just imagining you guys having wood fire.
Right. We do have a fireplace in the genealogy room, but it's a gas fireplace, so.
Okay, all right. No, it makes sense. I mean, I know what it is, I was just curious why there's a different line on it.
Right, right. Now, in the old building, we might have at some point have had some unusual heating fuels that they used, but just that. So collections is a big part of what libraries do. That's one of the things that we've done for many, many years, is to provide materials for the community to share and borrow. So you can see that that is, when we adjusted the budget down, I'm sorry, one of those got changed on me, this is category percentage. So you can see, though, that it went down considerably in that time in what we have budgeted to purchase. So I'll tell you, the mystery category there is our subscriptions to magazines.
It's on ours.
It's on ours, good. I don't know what happened on there. So one of the reasons this one we have taken down over time, besides, you know, when we made the adjustment for the budget cuts that we had to make, but recently, that one has been continuing to go down, in part because a lot of magazines aren't publishing anymore. You may have noticed, some of those long-time magazines aren't around anymore, and so we have fewer to purchase. But we also have a gift that we received a few years ago through the Des Moines County Community Foundation, and it was designated to the library, and it's one that we'll receive every year. And the person who is in memory of, that was what he did at the library, came in and he used the newspapers and he used the magazines. And so we decided to dedicate that fund each year to offsetting the cost of that. It covers all the costs of the newspapers we subscribe to. That's why we have a little plaque on our newspaper rack with that person's name on it now, and it actually, this year, had a little more, we could put towards some of the magazines we subscribe to, too. So that's why that is one area that we continue to be able to reduce a little bit. So yes, that's just been a very heavily impacted part of the budget. In terms of the other operating expenditures and lines, I, you know, won't go into all of those details, but the rest of it breaks down with the biggest piece being the Alliant bills that we get. So light and power for this year, we're not asking for any change, which is only possible because we have been working diligently for years to try to reduce the costs there, because you know, the rate increases happen. So as Nancy Alliant says, we are mitigating the effects of rate increases with these projects. You know, my hope, of course, with these projects, is we'll just see the bill just drop, and that doesn't really happen, but it is meaning that we aren't asking for more for next year, that we can absorb those rate increases is our hope. And you can look back at the last few years and see that we've been doing okay with that. We actually started in 2009, so only a few years after we were in the new building, we did a retro-commissioning project with Alliant, and that included, their suggestions from that included updating our HVAC system, not the mechanics of it, but resetting some of the settings in it, adding some insulation, and several other changes, smaller changes as well. And so we did take, we did all of those suggestions at that time. We also did a couple of large lighting conversion projects, just at the end of 2018. It seems like it was more recent than that, but they tell me the warranty is up, so it was the end of 2018, that they put in LED lights for all of our interior lights, our cans and our tube lighting. And 2019, we just finished a project converting all of our parking lot lights to LED. So, and we had done one earlier, too. We have these really big bowl lights, they're more decorative, and the sconces and a few outside ones that they did initially before those projects. So we've done three in all of those kind of projects. We also, every time we are eligible for Alliant to do an energy audit, we have them come and do an energy audit, and every time they find something, this last time, they did not find much at all, they suggested, but we make sure to follow through and do those projects as we're able to, to continue, say, to mitigate those rate increases. So we have a very, may see for heating fuel for gas, we have a very low gas bill for a building of our size, and that's because we have geothermal heating and cooling. So most of the expense is in operating the pumps and those kind of things, which is all electric Couple of the other lines, you can see, they're very small changes, and I only brought up some of the lines that I felt were worth talking about. A lot of the other changes are much smaller than this. So I talked about already the fact that we do use property maintenance for our maintenance, and we contract out janitorial services. That laundry and cleaning services, that's our janitorial services primarily. We also, we add a little bit in there because we feel it's really important that we are getting the carpets clean, we are cleaning the chairs, just getting the windows cleaned, some of that kind of stuff, and our cleaners don't do that. That's something we do on top of that. So we've been trying to work that in each year the best we can into the budget. We are at 13 years in our building, and I hope it will be a lucky year, and we won't have a lot of things that break, but we are seeing things, you know, pumps and just different things like that that need attention. So it's always a little bit difficult to gauge how much that's gonna be from year to year. We do have preventative maintenance contracts on our HVAC system and our control system for the HVAC, our sprinkler system, our alarm system, our elevators and things. So we do try to make sure that we're keeping up and maintaining all those things, but things happen, and sometimes we do have some repairs that need to be made. So you'll see that in there. But the property maintenance charges, we did take down, and the reason we did that is just looking at the past history of the last few years. Now, last year is really low, and we made a very conscious effort to try not to use those services as much as possible because we had some other areas that we needed to make up for in the budget. So we only contacted them if we absolutely needed something. This year, we're getting to do a few little projects that we've been needing and kind of put off into this year, so that's been good. And we really appreciate, we love the property maintenance team, they do a wonderful job for us, and so the reason that was low wasn't because we were dissatisfied in any way with their service, it was just we just didn't have that in the budget that year because we needed to make up in another area. So we do also contract for snow removal, so that's not in the property maintenance charges, that's in a different line, but that is another expense that we have in there. And the Board, each year, another position that we look at every year is this, hey, we stopped having a maintenance person when the last one retired, we had a full-time person. Is this time to look at that? Are we still saving by not having that? And we are, as we look at it, our current janitorial services, the amount we use for property maintenance, and some of those other expenses we have, like janitorial supplies and all that, we add all that up, it's still not enough to have a full-time person. But we keep an eye on that to see where we're at with that every year. Telephone and communications went down, and the reason that was, we were able to take that down is because for the last couple of years now, we is because for the last couple of years now, we successfully met the standards, requirements for E-Rate federal funding. And for our internet service. They phased out E-Rate funding for phone service, which we had been using all along. Once we were able to meet the requirements for federal funding for internet service, our bill went down considerably. So, we, we wanted to kind of wait a couple of years, we took too much of a drop cause we weren't sure how it was gonna look longer term. But, it looks like, I, I feel pretty confident we'll be able to stay within that amount. We did also apply through E-Rate for our recent network upgrade. That's not something in this line at all. But, just for interest, because we made those guidelines, they also have funding you can get for hardware needs. And so we were able to upgrade switches, our firewall, and some other networking. And they paid about 80% of the cost. So, it was, that was a huge benefit for us to be able to take advantage of that E-Rate funding. Technology is a, a pretty good-sized piece of our budget in terms of the, the software that we use for checking in and cataloging and doing all those kind of library functions. And then, as I said, we have a lot of computers to keep up and going. So, anywhere we can find ways to save, we are always on the lookout for that. Another line that we reduced is postage and shipping. And, during I did the annual report, I went home and asked, cause my husband had listened to it. He said, "Man, you talked about interlibrary loan a lot." So I won't talk about it too much tonight, cause I talked about it in the annual report, that we now have a courier service that we're super excited about. But I can tell you that courier service is a big part of why the postage line is down. It's gonna help our interlibrary loan folks to be able to continue to offer that service without postage expense. Because they can just put them in the bin and the state library is providing that service to pick it up. And send it around the state. So, that's been wonderful. Another piece of why our postage has been going down a little bit over the years, even though, as we all know, postage rates have been going up, is that we are able to, through our software that we use for our library functions, we're able to offer notices by email. We've had that for a little while now. So then we don't have to mail people overdue notices, or notices saying your book is on, that you requested is on hold now. So, we also, then this last year, they offered us text messaging. So, that is even more convenient for people. A lot of people didn't want the email, they don't check it that often. But text messaging, so many people use. So we are really doing a lot of suggestive selling of that. I know we were talking about fast food a little before. I worked at Hardee's, I'm very good at suggestive selling. Do you want fries with that? So when I talked to you on the phone, I was like, "I see we have a cellphone number for you, would you like text messaging?" Because every time we can convert someone to text messaging, that's, you know, 50 cents on a, every mailer we don't have to send to them. So, so we're really making an effort to get people to switch to email or text messaging so those notices don't have to go by mail. And we can continue to have our postage and shipping go down. It's very hard to know if this is realistic, because the service, the courier service just started, not even a month ago. So, we are, we'll, we'll wait and see how that goes. But I think, I think we were conservative, and it might even be better. Might even have less than we spent on that. So those are all of our non-personnel expenditures I just wanted to touch on to give you some context for. And every, all the departments talk about their capital improvement plan. And for those of you who've seen my presentation before, you know, the library doesn't have anything in the capital improvement plan. And I always just wanna make sure to mention that. We did, though, in past years. In past years, there were times when we would ask for funds for technology hardware. When we had budget cuts, we stopped doing that. And so, we are very fortunate that our library foundation has been able to pick up support for replacing equipment. So we can continue to keep all those many computers that we operate running and, and replace on a fairly regular rotation. We'll say, sometimes people don't know about the library foundation, so I'll just talk about that briefly. As well, we do have three different boards that I work with. So I have the Library Board of Trustees, that are governing board. I also, just on Tuesday this week, met, they have quarterly meetings, our foundation board. And the library foundation is, they've been around for many years. And they were started to be an endowment-type fund. So, they, from their earnings they make each year, I can ask them for funds. So that's kind of how that works. And I will say, so far this fiscal year, they have granted the library $88,000. A little over that. And that represents those two new self-check stations that we wouldn't be able to get without the library foundation. It's that parking lot light conversion to LED. One of the, you know, it's, and one of the nice things for us is when we look at those conversion projects we've done, the foundation has been a part of all of those. And, you know, they always show you a payback period. Well, the nice thing is, our operating budget, that gets that payback right away because we're using the library foundation to fund the project. We also just created a new toddler center, so we bought some new bins, they paid for some of that. That network upgrade, the 20% that E-Rate didn't pay for, they came through and paid for, for us. We have teen interns, three times a year, they pay stipends for those. We have an upcoming genealogy workshop, they've been doing that for many years. And they pay for that speaker and collection enhancements and, and other things as well. But that's just a little summary of what they've been able to do for us this year. So we're very fortunate to have that, that group that has raised funds over the years, be able to give us from their earnings they make each year. Yeah, we'd be a very different library without having a library foundation, including we would not be in the current building. Because vast majority of the funding came from private donations and through the, the library foundation. Another area that we don't have any money for in our operating expenditures are for classes and events. And just threw up the statistics here from last year, it's a very big piece of what we do. I always say, if you come to a library program and there's food, it's because our Friends the Library, that third board that I work with, probably made that happen. And they paid for the presenter fees, the supplies, let's say, the snacks, all of that. Because we don't have anything in our budget for that. So, that group thankfully is able to come forward and, and raise some funds for us to make that happen. Our summer reading program, we'll be sending out letters in the next couple of weeks to businesses and community groups to help us support the summer reading program. We bring in even more classes and events and, and, you know, jugglers and all those fun things. The zoo comes, all of that in the summer. And, again, there's nothing in our budget that we're presenting here tonight that, that covers that cost. And so we go out and fundraise for that. And we're very fortunate to have a lot of generous businesses and community groups that, that keep that going every year. So all the prizes, all of the events and supplies and things for the summer are taken care of by those donations. And occasionally, some extra donations from our Friends group. So, that kind of leads in, and sort of started already, that discussion of other funding and support that we have and use and seek out. We take very seriously our responsibility of being stewards of the taxpayer dollars that are allocated to us. So not only do we spend time looking at our budget, like the expenditures we proposed here, to always be looking for ways in which we can find savings and stretch those dollars the very best that we can, we also seek out additional funding whenever possible. Cause we want to make the best use of those dollars and at the same time, provide the best service we can. So it's, it's always trying to achieve both of those goals. Jim mentioned a little bit on that first night, the trust and agency funds, those special funds that are available. One of those you'll see in the whole packet, it's not in, in these sheets you get tonight. But, there is a library trust line. And that line, just so you understand what that, that one is about. Anytime we get money from the foundation, they don't pay for things directly. They donate it to the library, it goes in there and then we pay for it out of there. So, you'll see all of the foundation donations go through there, as well as the Friends donations. And any other donations that we receive directly that are designated for use by the library. A lot of times they're for a specific purpose. So, one of those areas are, we have people who, fairly regularly, we have someone who passes away and their memorial is to the library. And so those funds go in to that, maybe reflected in that library trust. And typically, we purchase books with those and put markers in each book that they were donated in memory of that person. Sometimes people do those in honor of people as well, it's different ways. So memorial funds are a part of that. It's not all foundation and Friends funding that goes through there. But that's what that is, is about, that. So all the funds we raised for summer reading program, those will go into that fund and be used out of there. Yeah, and we, we have a donation from somebody recently. They want to, they want just to be used for large type, or, you know, something very specific. And so we keep track of all of those specific requests and try and make sure that, that happens. We also seek out grants, mentioned on there. So we regularly looking for grants. The Burlington Fine Arts League has supported art projects most years, we, we get funding from them. The Murray Foundation has been funding for several years now, our Outreach Storytime, so preschools. We go to over 30 classrooms and reach over 50 children every month with that program, and they, they fund that. The Rotary Club is our primary funding source for our Babies Need Books programs. We can give books and literacy information to all of the families having babies at Great Room Medical Center. The Kiwanis funded our Money Matters collection in the youth section this last year. The Optimists partner with us, cause we're also seeking not just funds, but partnerships to make what we do go further. They partner with us to have our T-COSS group, Teen Inspiring Change, Optimism in Service, is what that stands for. And that group is a group of teens who do service in the community, as well as in the library. And it gives them opportunities for leadership and team skills. And at the same time, they also raise funds for their own programs. So, I put the little picture there. One of the things they do is the Optimists put out the flag routes. They have a route that they do. And for every flag they put up and every flag they take down, they get a dollar. So, those funds go into that library trust and are set for using for teen programs. So they're raising funds for all of their own things that way. They also convinced us to put a pop machine in the lobby. And all the funds we receive from that go to them, cause it was their suggestion. And so they can use that for their programs as well. We got a State STEM grant, which wasn't money, but it was a lot of tools that we got this last year. Could be used for classes and, and also free training for our staff members on how to use all those things. Our toddler space, I mentioned earlier, those new bins we got. We got a donation from the Alliant Foundation. So there's a whole bunch of different grants that we go out for and, and try to do. And as I said, we, we partner with the school districts and other groups. Coming up in the spring, the author of Pete the Cat is coming to Burlington, thanks to the school district. And we will have him coming to our library because we were able to partner and get a better rate that way, so.
I love that guy.
So, he's, it's a very popular book. I think it's gonna be really fun to have him in town. So, so there's different things like that that we're able to do. We just, this week, talked to Mona Ash about partnering and doing some, taking some of our programs to the Bridges program. So we're really excited about doing that, having them come do a, a tour with us. It's not a funding source, but it's a great partnership to build relationships and to have, to reach out to those people, build that awareness, our number one goal in our strategic plan. And you never know where those kind of partnerships will lead. So we're, we're really happy to, to pursue those kind of things as well.
Sorry.
Alright. So, I, oh, I, just to go back, I don't feel like I was clear, talked enough about the, our Friends group. And I do have a picture up here, and part of why I know I have to talk more about the Friends group is because last week they had their trivia contest, which they raised a fund for the library. Next week is their book sale, so I gotta put in a plug for the Friends. And they do three or four book sales, sometime, this year, I think they're doing five book sales, to raise funds. And that group also runs our footnote shop in the lobby of the library. So they put in incredible amounts of volunteer time. And I, I'm always amazed they can keep that space open, all the hours that they do, all the funds they raise. I go to their meetings once a month and I'm able to ask for those things like snacks and supplies and speaker fees and all of that. And they, they have, most past few years, been able to contribute in that range of $40,000, which is amazing for a, a volunteer group. And I know they are having struggles sometimes, having enough volunteers to keep footnotes going. There's some, some of their volunteers work many shifts a week. And so they're, they're pretty maxed out on what they can do, but I think they're, they're doing an amazing job. And just to kind of further brag on them, just a little bit, a couple of years ago, at the Iowa Library Association Conference, the statewide conference, they did a presentation that our Friends group did. And we had people from other communities, the director from Davenport said, "How do you have such a great Friends group?" So, we are really fortunate, even larger communities see our Friends group as doing a really amazing job. So, we're fortunate to have those kind of supports, and we continue to nurture those relationships so that we can, can have other sources of funding besides what we're asking for here tonight and the budget expenditures that we, we've been talking about. So I wanted to make sure to, to talk about those things. And then that is all that I had to present. So I tried to keep it short, I'm not sure I did quite as short as I thought I would. But, there, there's really, as I said, the main thing with this budget request is, it's maintaining what we're doing now. There's nothing really new that we're asking for. But I wanted to give explanation about several things, cause anyway, we have a couple of new people. But I'm happy to answer any questions, too, you might have.
I just wanna comment, it's no secret that I love the library and I'm a fan of what you guys do. I really wish that we had the kind of support for the other departments in our community that you have garnered while you've been down there. I, I'm impressed by the, the number of people that chip in to help you. And we have a beautiful library and, and great staff, so. We do have something to brag about here, and it's, it's that library. And it'd be amazing if the community could come together for some of these other things that we're doing, like they've done for you, to, to help out.
Thank you.
Rhonda, do you feel like the turnover within the collection is adequate?
Um, yeah, we, you know, I, I, we were just having some conversations about the changing trends in the collection. And, and, you know, we've so long been known for checking out books, and we still are. And one of the things I looked up when we looked at circulation trends, nationwide, circulation of print items are decreasing a little bit. People are moving towards electronic resources and reading in other ways. So that, that's part of a national trend. But I looked up our statistics compared to other libraries in our category. The state library, we're considered a G-size library. Anything between a population of 25,000 and under 50,000. So when I look at those, and I look at our circulation per capita, our circulation per capita is 14.71. And we are the third highest in that group. The ones above us would be Bettendorf and Marion, so make sure I'm reading across right here. So if you look at, which obviously are not cities that we typically compare ourselves to, cause they're, they're larger end of that. But if you look at some of the other cities that we do compare ourselves to, like say, in Atomoa, their circulation is 4.78 per capita. So we still have a very healthy use of our collection compared to other communities in, in the state. I do think it's going well. Though I, you know, we are always, we just are, we're just about finished with a full inventory of the collection. And one of the things we, we also are always doing is looking at cleaning out the collection. Things that people aren't using, wanna get those things out and be purchasing things that they want to use. And so as we, we look at those trends and kind of think about how we wanna purchase, too. So, things like music CDs, we're not really buying anymore. People are streaming that, or they're, you know, they're getting their music in other ways. And so that's, that's one of those collections we're looking at and going, "Yeah, that doesn't turn over very well." But we tend to keep on with some of those older technologies longer. For people in the community that are still relying on those technologies, that's why I think it's only been two years ago that we got rid of VHS tapes. So, you know, that, that took a while. But, we don't have any cassette tapes left, I promise.
They all went to Don's house, too.
Yeah, boys.
I think you, I think you told us before, but what, what, what are you using the, the old coffee shop for now? Cause I know that you've been doing something different with that.
Yes, and we're, we're waiting to get some contractors in there to do some remodeling. But we're using it even before that. We're calling it our create space. So, we've had Scott from Property Maintenance has been helping us, took down the coffee shop sign, prepared it to be repainted. So we're really hoping in the next few months, before summer reading would be my, my, my goal, we will be able to have that looking better there. But we are using it already. The idea is to use it as another alternate meeting space, cause our meeting rooms get heavily used. But really focus it more on the hands-on meetings that might get a little messier. Whereas our nice big rooms with the carpet, they're a little more of a sit-down meeting kind of thing, where the hands-on activity stuff could happen in the create space. And because we've gotten these grants from the State STEM organization and, you know, tonight, they're doing something in there, actually. Their collaboratory, they're doing coding and stuff. We have a lot of tools, a lot of robotics and other really cool stuff that we can. We have a lot of tools, a lot of robotics and other really cool stuff that we can use. And so we're gonna be using that space to do more of that for all ages.
That's what I thought. Does anybody else have any questions?
Rhonda, I just, I love the library. In my next life, I'm gonna reincarnated, reincarnated with some with more time so I can do more reading because I love it. You amaze me how you were able to trim up the edges of a circle and make it all work and, and how many inner working parts you have and staff that you have and you do a tremendous job. And kudos to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I will echo both Robert and Cam Lynde. You know, you and your staff, when the gauntlet was thrown and expenses cut, could have, could have just curled up and just did what you did. But you've not only adapted to that, you've expanded your services. So hats off to you, great stewardship of our public library.
For real.
Absolutely, great job.
Anybody else have any questions? We're happy with you.
All right, well, thank you. And I, I will certainly be telling the staff those compliments tomorrow when we meet because they, they really appreciate it.
Well, we all know they're informed enough that they watch these meetings.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure they'll, they'll watch the video later. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Don, we're giving you just as much time.
You gotta, you gotta follow that up.
Nah.
Do we need one?
Is that a hint?
Are you long-winded?
We'll, we'll go ahead and press on, Don.
He saves all his words.
No, actually, they, they reschedule that, so I will not be leaving mid, mid-meeting.
I, I however, Don, will be leaving just before five, so I'll apologize early for that.
Yeah, that's, Bill and Linda stepped out, so we'll give a couple, just a couple minutes.
How thick is that? Mr. Fiddy, you can see it.
This could be part of Rhonda's collection.
Well, I've, I said no break, Don, but the three of them are gone, so give me just a minute to get, get them all heard it back up here. Oh, yeah. How many cheeseburgers do you have, Jim? Just one so far? I was trying to gauge how many, so.
I try to, I end up running after most of these meetings.
Take off the stress.
Some of it.
All right, let's, let's, uh, let's gather up and let's get, press on, guys.
It's the most amazing candy ever made.
Pretty good. Are you gonna throw that away?
Yes, I am.
Did you chuck that away?
Absolutely. How about you, sir?
Thank you, throw that pound away too, it's out of A.
I apologize, I promised Peanut butter popcorn today, it didn't happen.
You ready?
We're ready, sir.
Ready.
Charge on.
Bring it on.
All right, first one we'll go through is the wastewater treatment facility. Next slide. Wastewater treatment facility, the span of responsibilities are to operate and maintain the treatment plant. There are fifteen sewage pumping lift stations throughout the city. We maintain those, monitor and manage the operation of the equalization tanks. Currently, we have two, Lucas and Gunnison. We also have a laboratory, we do sampling in-house. We also do sampling out in the community with some of our industries and perform analysis. We do oversee and operate the industrial pretreatment program as required by our MPDS permit. And we also de-water and we land apply the biosolids that are a byproduct of the wastewater treatment process. Next slide. The current design of the facility with improvements is twenty point eight MGD. That's the peak flow we can handle. It was designed for an average wet weather flow of ten point eight five. In fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the actual numbers, we had a flow rate come into the plant metered at twenty-one million gallons a day, which is just right at or slightly higher than the peak flow and you can do that for a brief period of time. In a twenty-four hour period, the most flow we took through the plant was seventeen point one million gallons. The least amount was three point five million gallons. So that can tell you the difference between a wet weather event and if we have really dry weather. And I'm sure that three point five was probably during the winter when the groundwater was frozen and, and not moving into the sewer system through infiltration. The one point six is when the Hesco barriers broke and Market Street Lift Station was down and was down for a period of days. And with that loss of that flow from that lift station, we still had portions of the community coming to this plant through other lift stations and through the Mississippi Interceptor. And we had days where we had as little as one point six million gallons coming in in a twenty-four hour period. The average flow over that fiscal year eighteen nineteen was four point six million gallons per day. On the right-hand side, you can see the figures that were for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen. Pretty much the same. Next slide.
Hey, Don.
Yes.
Is the market, is the market lift station, is that the largest capacity?
Yes, that's our largest station. Can pump up to ten thousand gallons per minute, one point four, or fourteen point four million gallons a day.
Thank you, sir.
The current design of the wastewater treatment plant after the twenty-twelve improvements is ninety-one hundred pounds of BOD. The actual average that we took in during fiscal year eighteen nineteen was forty-seven hundred. Previous year, it was fifty-four hundred. We had a lot more water, a lot more rainfall. In seventeen, eighteen, we had thirty-four inches in that twelve-month period. In eighteen nineteen, we had fifty-four inches in our rain gauge at the wastewater plant. More rain, more water getting into the sewer system, more flushing through this combined sewer overflows that we still have. And that might explain in part why the number is so much lower during that wet weather year. Next slide, please. So how do we pay for the wastewater treatment facility operation? Is we have sewer fees that appear on the water bill. Next slide. Expenditures, how do we spend the money that we get? Well, the wastewater facility is broken into two categories. One's administration, which has a prefix and the budget line item of fifty-four oh one. And the other one is operations maintenance, which is fifty-four oh two. An administration, fifty-four oh one, the suffix of four hundred series is personnel. We have two full-time people in the four hundred series. So all the line items under the four hundred series is based on having two full-time persons, myself and my office coordinator. The five hundred series are the contractual services where we pay someone else to do something for us. Line item five twenty-nine is our billing services that we pay to the waterworks for providing the services of sending out and bills and collecting the money. The bill that comes to the city for that services, I believe that the finance department takes that bill and breaks it into three parts and two of the three parts are paid out of the fifty-four oh one, five twenty-nine line item. Five eighty-one in the five hun, five, fifty-four oh one series is payments to West Burlington. We have some residences within the city's limits that actually are sewered to go to West Burlington. That was more, it was easier to get them there than, and, and, and more cost-effective than to bring them to us. Next line, slide. The other line series in the fifty-four oh one administration are the transfers out. And they total one point five six million dollars. These numbers are generated by City Hall. Do you want to address those at all or just go on?
Since I wasn't paying attention, we have some geo-bond issues that are in place. I think there's two different ones. One is the majority of that, like four hundred and eighty thousand, I'm gonna go off the top of my head. And the other is a smaller amount that finance some sewer projects. Since they are geo-bond projects, they have to be paid for out of the debt service account, even though they're paid with sewer revenues. So we transfer money out of the sewer fund to debt service account where the payments are made. The three hundred thousand dollar transfer, we transfer to a separate capital account for various sewer rehabilitation projects, projects that come up. The most notable one that we just recently closed on was the hole that we had down by the auditorium as a six hundred thousand dollar overall project. We use this allocation, separate account that this allocation goes to to cover that project. The seven hundred forty thousand dollar expense transfer, that's transferred to the general fund for basic administrative support and acts as a payment in lieu of taxes type payment. It's ten percent of your projected gross revenues.
Thank you. Next slide. So expenditures, as I said, the wastewater facility is divided into two categories, administrative fifty-four oh one, maintenance and operation fifty-four oh two. And when we say facility, we're talking about the plant, the lift stations scattered throughout the city and the equalization tanks. The four hundred series are costs associated with personnel. We have fifteen full-time people at the wastewater facility and one part-time person. Six plant operators, one maintenance supervisor, six maintenance personnel, one lab supervisor slash pretreatment coordinator. And we have one full-time and one part-time lab tech. Next slide. The five hundred series are the contractual services where we pay someone to do something for us. Five eleven specifically is consulting professional services. We do send out some samples to private lab to do work for us, analyze it. Most of it goes to the state hygienic lab. We also are charged out of that line item for the audit, our cost of the audit towards the audit that goes on. Five nineteen, other professional services. If you look at the history on the pa, the page in front of you in five nineteen, you can see that number came down dramatically a couple of years ago. That was because it was out of that line item they were paying for the sewer master plan. It's been completed. This line item has consulting as needed that I have with a firm called HR Green. It's a consultant I've used a lot through the years. It went up from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. I raised the cost. I'm planning on, when I come back to the council in the, end of the fiscal year, to renew that agreement to, to increase it to fifteen thousand. That's where we can call them up on the phone and ask them questions for small projects or small questions that they can research for us and provide us information and they get reimbursed for the time that they spend helping us. We also have fifteen thousand dollars in there pertaining to the, our SCADA system, supervisory control and data acquisition system. It's getting aged and there are, is some upkeep costs associated with that. And so that's another new line item or new cost that I put in that five nineteen. Next slide, please. Five forty-three is our light and power. That's the pay for power that's used at the plant. That's also covers the cost of operating the lift stations. The wastewater lift stations, fifteen scattered throughout the city, including the largest one, Market Street, down by the auditorium. The other is storm water. We do operate a pump, you know, on the riverfront, near the lift station. There's a wet well where a future storm water lift station will be built. We do put in electric operated pumps into that wet well and operate that off of the lift station as well as there's some electricity that's used at the equalization tanks. Next slide. The six hundred series in the fifty-four oh two budget is for commodities. One of the larger line items in the six hundred series is six twenty-two chemicals that are used for various purposes. We use chemicals in the collection system at the various lift stations for controlling grease and odors, fats, oils, greases and odor treatment. We also use chemicals to de-water the biosolids, the byproduct of wastewater treatment. We use chemicals specifically chlorine for disinfecting the treated wastewater before it's released to the receiving stream, the Mississippi River. And we also purchase our lab chemicals from that particular line item. Next slide. Expenditures out of the seven hundred series, which would be the CIP. We have in seven fifteen buildings, we have a total of three hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred dollars dedicated for seven fifteen. The items that are listed below them with the dollar amounts are what makes up that three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Repair, recoat of the drive it, that's the exterior, kind of like a stucco that's on the buildings, many of the buildings down there. That's for the south end of the plant, for the largest portion of the south end of the plant. That's not for the entire portion. Painting the Market Street Lift Station, Screens Building, that's the building that's on the south side of the brick building down on the riverfront on the south side of the auditorium. Digestor cover repair, we're hoping to be able to take the digester down. That's been a problem because of the water table, the river stage. We have money in the budget to recoat final clarifier superstructure. There's four circular final clarifiers, that would be to do one. Painting the headworks on the interior and then also a power factor correction. It's a electrical system that will allow us to reduce our electric bill over time, reduce from having to pay penalties. It'll probably take somewhere around seven to eight years for that system to pay for itself. Seven thirty-one streets, we used to have money in there. As you can see from the history, it's down to zero because we, in our budget meeting, decided that this should really be something that's in line item six thirty-nine, fifty-four oh two, six thirty-nine. So we took the money out of seven thirty-one, historically in seven thirty-one, and we moved it to six thirty-nine. Next slide. Seven thirty-nine, that is the repair or replacement of three roofs. Seven forty-two, operating equipment. We had in the budget for last year a telescopic boom lift. We did not have enough money. I did not want to come to the council and say, gee, I really underestimated how much it cost us. Please go ahead and approve purchase of it. So I said, we'll just delay it until next fiscal year. So that's what we've done. That's the type of the equipment that, it's usually a four-wheel tractor type things, platform that has a telescopic arm that goes out with a personnel basket on the end and we positioned in many different positions. We have a lot of overhead work that takes place. We use ladders. We also use a manual crank-up type man lifts. This will allow us to be able to reach areas we can't get to with those because it has horizontal and angled reach where the others do not. And it'll just be a quicker, safer piece of equipment. We should have gotten one a long time ago. The draft tube mixer without the drive, that's for the digester. We have three draft tubes on the digester. This will allow us to pull one, replace it with the spare and then take the one we just pulled and send it out to a machine shop or someplace and have it worked on and still maintain complete mix within our anaerobic digester. Vehicles, forty-five fifty, that is a rebuilt golf cart. We use golf carts down there, we're not playing golf or anything like that. We use them in lieu of driving a pickup truck from one end of the plant to the other end. It's a nine hundred feet from one end of the plant to the other. And so we use golf carts to run back and forth. We feel that that's a more effective economical way to do it. So our total CIP, a seven hundred series, is a very large number. It's five hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Next slide. Fiscal year twenty-two, it has vehicle in there, vehicles, a four-by-four pickup and a passenger car. We have a Golf Lane Lift Station, that's one of the fifteen lift stations. It was built in nineteen fifty-nine. It's a very unusual lift station, it's called a pneumatic ejector. I believe they're still making them. There is no open well where you can look and see water. It's actually a, a pot that water flows into and you got. It's actually a pot that water flows into, and you got check bells on either side, air compressors, air tank. And like I said, it was put in, ground in 1959. It's actually in a dry well by itself, and we're looking at doing, replacing that. And the discussion that we're having is whether we replace it with exactly what it is, because I believe they still are making them. There is, during the sewer master plan, they recommend that we try to normalize all of our lift stations so they're all the same. We did do that with, a few years back, with a lift station on Yoder, Yoder Drive. It was a different type of a lift station than what it is now, and what is there now is more common, like what we use every place else. This is a different animal. We'll have to make a decision what we want to do with that. Paint 104, final clarifiers. That's the superstructure, $61,800. The current 21 proposed has one in it as well. So each year we'll do one. Next slide. 23, there's that second part of the south end, that stucco-type exterior painting. Truck, a track skid loader, that's for use out in our land application program. Again, another clarifier, the lab hood, fume hoods. They've been there since 82. We've cleaned them up. We've repainted them a couple of times. They're getting to the point where we feel like we're going to have to replace them. The flood protection is the flood wall, and if you shut the plant off from the river, that means the water that's coming to the plant can't go out by gravity. Because if it's tied by gravity, well, then the river just backs up into the pipe and starts to flow out of the tanks. So you're going to have to build a large lift station to be able to pump everything that comes with plant, let it be pumped a second time to get out of the plant. And that's what that money's for. 24, garage doors, three garage doors, digester boiler tubes, natural gas boilers. We have six natural gas boilers. We have a hot water loop that runs throughout the entire plant, and those boilers went in in 2002. And then we have, again, painting another final clarifier. Next slide. Notice I don't have anything for fiscal year 25. Well, we actually have a golf cart in there, but it's so far out, I couldn't think of anything to put in there. Total proposed budget for fiscal year 21, the 5401, administration, the 5402, the facility operation and maintenance. We have an air scrubber that was budgeted in last, or the current fiscal year, 5450. That is supposed to be done before the end of the fiscal year, so that money's not in there. Our total budget is 2% less, but if you add in the transfers out and you put all those numbers together, it's virtually a zero change from the current fiscal year. Next slide. So the proposed increase in the sewer fee that appears on the water bill for non-metered accounts, I think this was shared with you by the city manager when it's initial presentation, non-metered accounts, 3% increase, metered accounts, 10% increase. Next slide. So space available for treatment at the plant after the 2010-2012 plant improvements, we spent $6.2 million for those improvements. And as a result of that, the current design is for 10.85 million gallons per day, 9,100 pounds BOD per day, and the current loading to the facility is right at about 65%. Next slide. Significant issues both now and in the future. We do have a requirement to do nutrient reduction, removing nutrients from the wastewater before it leaves the plant. I'm not really sure when that's going to be done. It was to be done sooner than later, but the city is renegotiating.
As we've been working through the integrated plan process, one of the things that they've asked us to do tentatively till we get a final approval on this, there's no guarantees, but they have talked about the need to continue to, on a five-year basis, to reevaluate the nutrient reduction strategy without having to build in doing the actual work at this point.
We did do, we did have a study performed with recommendations, and that was submitted to the state for their review. Trying to remember what the project was, I think it was estimated the project was going to cost between $6 and $7 million.
Six hundred thousand.
For the, everything being put in place, and then it was $3 to $400,000.
It was 300,000 annual operating costs.
Annual operating.
Which is about a 10% increase in our annual operating costs for the plant.
Right. Available storage for biosolids. There is a line item in the budget that's used for renting space in the Rutherford Building. That's been going on since about 2011. We're renting 12,800 square feet. That is line item 5402 hyphen 531, land and building. We've relied on that. It's worked for us. It's really not as much space as we'd like to have, but we have been successful in when the window is open, meaning the weather allows, the land is available, and the personnel's available, we do go out and we land apply the material. But otherwise, it's stored in that building and has been stored in that building since 2011 when we started. If for some reason that lease were to come to an end, then we have to find an alternative space.
Didn't you say there was someone who was interested in those biosolid materials at one time?
I'm not, well, we do land apply on farmers' fields, so the farmers we use are interested in the material.
Okay.
Odors, the air scrubber project is going to be completed this, end of this fiscal, before the end of the fiscal year. That's for the north end of the plant. Hopefully that will help us. As the city continues to separate sewers, odors can continue to be a problem. This system is intended to address that, prevent that from being an issue. But, you know, I can't say guaranteed 100%, 365 days a year, there's not going to be an issue. But the system should make a big difference. Flood mitigation, of course, is an issue that's in the forefront with the city of Burlington. The sewer master plan findings, addressing the identified publicly-owned treatment work limitations. I think that V and K, well, H.R. Green made a presentation, I think, on that, and then that was integrated into the integrated planning by V and K and working with the state on trying to adjust our consent agreement. There's a lot, a lot of work out there that's been identified as needing to be done. The SCADA system, the supervisory control and data acquisition, I have some money in the budget, but I had an evaluation done of the SCADA system here recently. I just got the report recently back. Hardware and software have a tendency to get to an age where the software manufacturer no longer supports it, and the hardware just has to be replaced. And our system is, what they're recommending in the report is we replace our system over the next three to five years, three to seven years, and today's dollars are estimating that's going to be between three-quarters and $1 million. So we need to be looking at doing that. A couple of other things that came to my mind while I was sitting here thinking is the water table at the wastewater plant. I'm hoping that when the seawall, as I call it, goes up, will help us, but the river has been so high for so long, and the water table, that affects the water table. We can't take our tanks down to clean them like we normally would. Some tanks are higher than others, but our digester and our aeration tanks are deeper than any of the other tanks, and a high water table prevents you from taking those tanks down because they'll want to crack or float. And maybe if the seawall goes up and they put in sheeting, driving it down, I don't know if that'll help us be able to easier take down the water table, but a continue high river stage is being very problematic for the wastewater facility. Other than that, I think probably the other problem is my workforce is aging. We're all getting old. It's hard to find replacements in a timely manner and have experienced people that know what they're doing. Next slide. Yay, that's one of my favorite slides. You saw it last year, maybe the year before. Reminds me of when I was a kid, out on the street with my brothers and the neighbors playing in the combined sewer overflows that were backing up in the street. Next slide. Any questions?
Streets were made of wood back then, right, Don?
Yeah, that's right.
Hey, Don.
Yes.
Biosolids, you said that they're kind of piling up. Are those time-sensitive? Can that be a problem if you have to store them for too many years and they can't get them out and put them in the fields?
Well, we typically don't have them stored in the building for longer than two and a half, three months. Usually a window will open up and we're able to get them out and spread them. Certainly, if the weather were to stay wet, ground not available because of the wetness, then that becomes an issue. At one time, I did explore as an overflow point going out and storing it at the landfill. They've got their composting pad. It's made out of something that they call sea stone, and I've worked with the state and talked with them, and it looked to me like that the door was open to us in an emergency situation. There's something called a 10-state standards that basically outline how you should design a wastewater facility, how you duplicate different things because if this one breaks down, you got the other one to go on, so on and so forth. And they actually recommend strongly that you have storage footprint that will hold six months worth of material. We're really only able to hold about two and a half months at best. If we were to change our de-watering equipment to a different type of system than what we currently have, the material coming off of the process would be drier and closer to dirt as opposed to cow pies or cottage cheese, chocolate pudding. You know, that stuff has a tendency to spread. It's harder to stack up.
Did it feel like chocolate pudding when you were holding it, Linda?
She did get a handful of it, didn't she?
She did grab a handful of it, and Don gave her this look.
And she's still here.
Did you really just grab that?
And I'm still here.
And she's still here.
She said it didn't taste like chocolate.
No. Chicka. Anything else?
Problems.
Gosh, that's not too bad.
How'd you do there?
Not bad, Don.
29 minutes.
That's pretty good.
That's a record for you.
Was that accounting for Jim's interruptions?
And that included even his talking, yes.
I apologize, Don, I have to leave.
That's fine, I understand.
Fully.
I'd go with you if I could.
You ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Solid waste.
Solid waste. There we are. My lid is fully closed, and I have room to spare because I recycle. That's the key, recycling. You can keep, have a smaller cart. We do get, we're having pretty good success in getting people to have their lids fully closed. Through the last year, which we've basically been using the program now for one year plus a month or so, there is, there is a process. People are converting to larger carts. We probably have somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 plus 35 carts, gallon carts that have been turned in and exchanged for larger carts. Some houses, we have about 125 houses that have more than one cart, so that they have that needed space to keep the lid fully closed. So we are having some success with that, and we're very, we're very glad to see that. Next slide. So trash fee that you pay on your water bill pays for what I refer to as the basic service. You get weekly collection of the contents of your trash cart with the lid being fully closed. You get the bag leaf collection program in the fall, that takes seven weeks. You get the bag leaf collection spring program, three weeks. We have the citywide cleanup program and free disposal for self-hauled wood waste with proof of paying the trash fee. All of that is what you get for the fee that you pay for the trash line item on your water bill. Next slide. If you have trash that's outside of the cart, then there is the tag. And one tag goes on each additional 33-gallon trash bag. There's the history of the retail cost of the trash tag, and that, actually, that cost is set by the retailer. They decide, you know, we tell them, I mean, and we advertise, and right now, we're advertising that the tag costs $4. I believe the retailer buys it from the city for $3.90, and then they turn around and competition, whatever, they're selling them for $4. That's what the current price is. That was set on November 1st of 2018 when we first were getting into the cart program. Next slide. Options to avoid tags. Tags are inconvenient. I mean, you've got to remember to have some in your drawer if you're going to have extra trash, and if you don't, it's your garbage day, you know? You can't come out and wave $4 at the garbage guy and say, here, take this, please. You have to have the tag, and it's expensive. It really is. So what are your cart options, monthly fees? People have been increasing the size of their cart to get away from using trash tags. A 35-gallon is 1425 a month currently, whereas a 65 is 1750. $3.25 more per month to go to twice the size cart, meaning if you buy one trash tag in a month's time, you've just spent more money for that smaller cart than if you would have simply gone to the larger cart to begin with. Same thing from a 65 to a 95. $3.25 more versus a one-time $4 trash tag. Lid must be fully closed. Note, of the fee that you're paying per month currently, $3.85 of that monthly fee is for the recycling services, whether you use them or not. Next slide. Additional options to avoiding tags. Again, you could get an additional 65-gallon cart, and that's $8 a month. That's a heck of a deal. Additional 95-gallon cart, $12 per month. Those are the current prices if you want to get an extra cart to go along with the cart you already have. Next slide. And of course, you could recycle. There are people who do not recycle. You can use the curbside program, or you can use the 24/7 drop-off at 1818 West Burlington Avenue. Again, your trash fee pays or includes that $3.85. It doesn't appear as a separate line item. When it says trash, that fee includes the recycling cost of $3.85 per month, and it's been that as of July 1st, 2019. Next slide. So what do you get for the recycling program services? Well, you've got your curbside collection program that goes every other week. You've got your 24/7 drop-off operation. They take the recyclables they collect or pick up and process them. They prepare them for sale, and they market them, and they get rid of them that way. They have education services. They go to industries, they go to schools and give presentations. They have the household hazardous chemical program out at the landfill, and we ourselves don't run all that services. We contract with the Des Moines County area recyclers. Next slide. Okay, so other uses for those trash tags. We allow you to use those trash tags for bulky items. And you can see there a list of the various types of items that people might generate. Again, those are the yellow $4 trash tags. There are still orange trash tags out there, and I'm not sure, there may still be some retailers, usually like the gas places, that are still selling the orange tags. So people will put one orange tag on their 33-gallon bag or an item following this, and we don't pick it up because it's only half the cost of disposing of that particular item. You can use the orange trash tags. I don't know if City Hall still has the supply, but originally, at the beginning, it was you go up to City Hall, if you needed an even number, you could go up and buy an additional tag to have an even number at City Hall. you could go up and buy an additional tag to have an even number at City Hall. They'd sell them to you. But I don't know if you have any more left or not. And then of course, there's the items that you have a drop-off for at the household hazardous chemical place out there at the landfill for computer monitors. If you want to drive all the way out there, you can pay $7 cash. Or you can put three trash tags. You have to call us and make an appointment. We've got to send a special truck out to handle these materials in the bottom half. That's why they're costing more to get rid of because we have to put a man in a truck specially just to go out and pick up that one item or two items or however many running all over town picking them up. Next slide. 2018, 2019 trash program collections. In 2018, 2019, we picked up 6,008 tons or an average of 116 tons per week. That excludes the leaves and that excludes the citywide cleanup. That was an 8% increase over the numbers in 1718. One of the assertions was, well, you go to a cart program, you've got a bigger cart, people are going to throw stuff away, they're going to stop recycling. I'm not going to go, I'm not going to drag out my recycling bin, I'm just going to throw it away. You're going to make me use a cart, I'm just going to throw it away. So there was an increase in tonnage of 8%. 275 tons of citywide collection cleanup, citywide cleanup program. It was virtually the same during the citywide cleanup program. We got the same quantity of material. So you add those two up and you get an 8% increase in seven, or 1819 versus 1718. Next slide. Staffing, how do we, who do we use or how do we get the job done? Again, recycling, we contract that out. But as far as the trash collection, the citywide cleanup, the leaf program, we have seven full-time drivers and we have one part-time driver, 29 hours per week. And we do flesh out the crew using temporary labor, which is in the budget in 5301-519. That's the line item that we pay our temporary labor from. And we use them during specialty programs. That's when we're talking about the leaf collection program, the citywide cleanup program. Next slide. Our fleet size is currently seven trucks with the oldest being 20 years. The newest has yet to arrive, but in fact, it's supposed to arrive next week. That AFL stands for Automated Front Loader. It hasn't arrived yet. It'll be a brand-new truck. The RL stands for Rear Loader. That's where's the, our original fleet and we outfitted it with the tippers on the back of the cart. So the truck looks the same pulling up to your, your garbage cart, but it's got tippers on the back and the guy's hooking on there and use a hydraulic, or use lever and a hydraulic, he tips the contents of the cart in the truck. That newest one of those, that's three and a half years old. Average is around 10 and a half years, median age 11 years. Replacement rate, we're trying to get back on a regular schedule, which you'll see in the CIP. Next slide. 2018, 2019 recycling. Okay, we, we commented about the, how the garbage collection, the tonnage went up 8%. In 1819, the curbside collection performed by the area recyclers was down by 7%. 522 tons of recyclables in Burlington. We pick up recyclables at city departments. We actually saw 36% increase of the recyclables that we've collected up, collected from the city departments. The drop-off at the recycling center, it too went up 7%. And it went from 1,304 tons to 1,401 tons in that one year's time. Now that drop-off is available to anybody. So that includes West Burlington. I personally use it and I know other people that use a drop-off. And I think there's probably county people who come in on their way to work or store or whatever and they probably drop off there too. Next slide. So how do we pay for all of this? The trash fee on your water bill, the revenue we get from the trash tags, and also there's some revenue from dumpster permits, those large commercial dumpsters that they're in the right of way, the private hauler is to have acquired a permit based on the length of time and paid a fee to City Hall. So all that goes into the solid waste pot. Next slide. Trash fee per month. Again, this is for a 35-gallon cart. You can see the history in July of 17. The basic fee was 10.35. The recycling fee at that time was 3.65. So on the water bill, the person was paying $14 a month. Times, most bills are quarterly, so it's $3 or three times at $14. You can see on the eight, 2018, mid-2018, and then on July 1st, 2019, we actually dropped the cost of the garbage collection, actually went down 10 cents. And because the total fee remained exactly the same, it didn't get changed. Even though the recycling went up, we kept the fee the same at the direction of the council wanting to see no change going to the cart program. And so it was three times 14.25 or $42.75 if you have a 35-gallon cart. Next slide. Proposed increase to the trash fee for 2021. We're looking at an increase of 15 cents on the basic service in the recycling center. The, the Des Moines County Solid Waste Commission is asking for 10 cents per household, per month. So the total is 25 cents per month increase for a one-wheeled cart household. So whether you have a 35, a 65, or 95, your monthly bill is going up 25 cents if you just have the one cart. Next slide. So there you are, proposed monthly trash fee. For, instead of 14.25, it's 14.50 for the 35 and on and down the line. And as, as far as I understand it, the trash tag is to remain at $4. Go ahead, next slide. Again, a 35-gallon cart. You've got your basic service now is going to be 10.55. Your recycling service is 3.95 for a total of $14.50. Times a quarterly bill, times three months, your trash line item is going to go up to $43.50 from the 42.75. It's gone up 75 cents because of this increase, proposed increase. Next slide. So how are you spending that money? Well, personnel costs are the 400 series, seven full-time, one part-time. Driver, that's in the 400 series. In the 500 series of the budget, that's the contractual services. The temporary labor that I mentioned that we use to flesh out our crew, that's line item 519. Next li- slide. We have 524 is the sanitation landfill services. That is the tipping fee for the household garbage. Citywide cleanup, that doesn't get covered by the fee that they, the, what do they call that? The community project allowance that the commission gives to the city. People who take out their self-hauled brush with their water bill showing they're a trash-paying customer, that gets charged against the city. Miscellaneous TV appliances and tires. Recycling service fee, the $3, proposed $3.95 per month per household. All of that gets paid out of the 524 account. Next line, slide. 529 miscellaneous service, technical services. There it is again, the billing services for the, by the waterworks. Two-thirds is charged against the sol- or the wastewater account, one-third against solid waste. Commodities are the 600 series. And there's the capital outlay, the 700 series, the, the 700 series, the CIP. In line item 743 is vehicles. There's $218,700 in there. That's for a new garbage truck proposed for this upcoming fiscal year as a rear loader to replace one of our existing rear loaders with two tippers on the back. Next slide. Fiscal year '23, two years later, two, another new Packer rear loader. Two years later on '25, another new Packer rear loader. And in between in '24, a new Corrado can. The automatic front loader is a commercial-grade truck. The Corrado can itself is what has the potential to wear out or give us problems. And that would fit on the arms of the front loader. So all we would do is switch from one to the other and keep that truck on the road. Losing that truck, of course, we haven't got it in the hand yet and we haven't used it. So what kind of efficiencies we're going to see and how it's going to work in our community is yet to be seen. But if it is more efficient than the current truck, which it's supposed to be, if it goes down and it's not out on the route, that means we have to make that up using our rear loaders and our available personnel. And that can be worrisome depending upon the reliability of the truck. I believe the truck will be very reliable and that hopefully won't happen for any length of time anyway. Next slide. And then as well, in the solid waste, we have a 900 series. Want to talk about that again, or?
Same type of percentage to the general fund. 10% of projected revenues, covers administrative costs and it kind of acts as that payment in lieu of taxes.
Next slide. So 1.8% increase in personnel services, 3.5 in contractual, 1.5 in commodities. It's down 20.4% because we, the rear loaders are less expensive of a truck than the automated collection truck. For the total, so the total is 0.4% less than the current fiscal year. When you add the transfers out, which is up by 5.2%, you have a total expenditure of 0% increase. Next slide. Program-related issues. Even though we're with carts, we are semi-automated. It's a different type of a wear and tear. Instead of picking them up and carrying them, they're dragging the carts. Some carts are way, way different than others. So they're, they're now they're experiencing, you know, their shoulders get tired, that type of thing. They're still climbing in and out of the trucks just like they always have. So you always have the potential of twisting an ankle or something like that. They're still policemen. The cart lid's supposed to be fully closed. And if it's not, then they're supposed to do something different than emptying that cart. And they try to educate the citizen over time, not come down on them with a hammer right off the bat. But there are people out there that just are hard to deal with. The impact of nuisances, uncollected garbage. It's the property that is responsible for the nuisance as well as it affects the neighboring properties. You have your odors, your vermin, your unsanitary conditions, your unsightly litter. Note, litter can be from either trash can or it can be from the recycling bins. We have seen a reduction in the number of nuisances that we report to the nuisance department saying, "You need to go to this address and take care of this." I don't know if you get a copy of the monthly report that gets to the city manager that for waste, we, we call it the waste management report because we managing wastewater waste and we're managing solid waste. And if you look at that, you can see there's a line item for regarding nuisances. And you can see, and I've got it, so there's a 12-month total and then the last total from the previous 12 months prior to that. And they are going down. And we would like to hopefully see a continuation of that trend. I'm sure the nuisance department is busy with many other things other than having to worry about garbage. The efficiency versus, versus the convenience set out for the auto collection. Auto collecting trucks, given the right circumstances, can be significantly more efficient than semi-auto or the old picking up the can and dumping it. But there are communities that tell everybody out of the pool, "You're in the alley, you're putting it at the curb." Don't care whether you've got flat ground or terrace properties, you've got to drag it out and put it at the alley. I mean, at the street, at the curb. And that can be problematic for some properties and the terrain. But there are communities, they don't care. It's more efficient, it's quicker. The guy doesn't have to pick the cart up. If the cart's not out where it's supposed to be, they just bypass it and they leave it. They require the person to toe the line to get their cart emptied. And if they don't, they don't get it picked up. And that's more efficient than how we're handling our alleys right now. The question is, is how important is efficiency over convenience? I mean, do we want to take that position? Next slide. I still have proposed changes, the citywide cleanup to a bulky item only. And then also changing the trash cart set-out location where prudent and reasonable. And I think I shared that when we were buying the new truck. I said that there's going to be places where we are going to ask and require the citizens to relocate their set-out location. I've probably sent out about 20 letters thus far to residences saying, "Hey, you need to change your set-out location." We've got some complaining, but not a lot, but we have had some complaining. I try to be reasonable and look at the properties and the terracing and so on and so forth. So I do try to take that in consideration. But I'm not always going to be here. The next guy might have a totally different perspective. So you move somebody from alley to curbside or you can follow a program that's implemented in Keokuk. And I talked with them and that's, this is what they do. They require the people on one side of the alley to move their cart to the other side of the alley so that truck goes through and he picks up all the carts on the one side. He doesn't have to go down and turn around and come back and run through that alley a second time to pick up the carts on the other side of the alley. That's an inconvenience to the citizens who are used to having their cart there at their house. But that's, that's another, that would be another efficiency-type thing. If we want to do it, we, it would be a real challenge to educate the public.
Saying, "How well is that working for Keokuk?"
They've been doing it for several years. And they, and I've talked, now I've never, not gone down and visited with the drivers, but the supervisor tells me that it's working fine.
Did they used to do it the old, the way we do it, or?
I don't know what they started, if that, they started out that way with, that's when they implemented the program, they required that or not. I don't know. But that's, you know, that in orange, change the trash cart set-out location where prudent and reasonable. First thing would be moving people from the alley to the curbside where it can be done. But there's a lot of alleys out there that that's probably not a practical thing to do. Now then, do we take that step and say, "Well, you move your cart over to this side."
Let me ask you about like a busy street like Summer Street where there's not a lot of room to be setting a trash can out by the curb and it's busy. So in situations like that, what would your suggestion be?
Well, you know, again, we haven't gotten into it. I haven't visited other communities. I will tell you that our truck that we've ordered is outfitted with a lot of safety-type stuff for people to see the truck. And believe it or not, even though the truck is big, there's people who don't see it. We've had people run into our trucks, not on ice or snow, they just, probably a cell phone. But we have people run into the trucks. We've almost had our people hit by vehicles. But I know, I'm, I'm sure there are communities that pick up on streets like Summer Street. And the people who are behind the truck just have to slow down and wait or wait for their opportunity to get around it. It can work.
Well, so right now, basically though, Don, you're doing the, you're, you're changing that cart location where prudent and reasonable. You're do, you're handling that already.
Right. And we haven't had the truck here and we won't know. And when we get the truck here, then we'll know something.
And then we'll know a little bit more too about the alley.
It's going to be a learning curve.
And it could be that, you know, we trust you as, my opinion is, at least me, is we trust you to be our manager and I, you know, if it has to be that way, then that's what it's going to have to be. So we'll, we'll just have to take it, once we get the truck here and go from there.
I do not envision this community being everybody out of the pool, everybody out front. You know, I don't care if you've got to go down 20 steps, your cart's front. You know, I don't care if you gotta go down twenty steps, your cart's gotta be out front. I don't see that happening. It can happen, but it's not.
It's pretty, it's pretty tough on some of the properties.
That's right. But we all need golf carts.
Yeah.
Next slide. So, bulky item, if we were to go to a bulky item program for Citywide Cleanup, this is the same slide I had up last year. This is definition in orange, a single item in and of itself that will not fit into the thirty-three-gallon garbage bag. If you have a larger cart, people can get rid of Citywide Cleanup-type things throughout the year, you know, not wait for the program. And we have the tag program for bulky items that you can get rid of things throughout the year. It's the small stuff that we are trying to, oh, there's examples of what a bulky item is. And at the bottom, it says bulky items are items that are not easily transported by the average household. Not everybody has a truck. Nobody, not everybody has a trailer that can behind their car and haul larger objects to the landfill. Next slide. Items that will no longer be accepted free, if we were allowed to make this change, at the set-out location during what's been called Citywide Cleanup and renamed a bulky item program, would be things like toys, shoes, clothes, hoses, bedside lamps, pictures, computers, radios, all those types of things we pick up as part, as part of the Citywide Cleanup program, all of which could fit into a thirty-three-gallon bag by themselves, or along with other items, and they could easily be loaded and transported in a car. Or, again, if you had a ninety-five-gallon cart, or a sixty-five-gallon cart, you could get rid of that kind of stuff that would fit in, if you have the space. You know, some people aren't going to want to buy a six, or rent a sixty-five-gallon cart unless they're filling it with garbage all the time. But, go ahead to the next slide. Oh, reality disposals no longer simple or cheap. Examples of changes in services. This is a reality, this is truth. It's also a frustration to citizens. And the complaint, "Well, my fee didn't go down, and you stopped taking tires, you stopped taking batteries, you stopped taking appliances, wood waste, yard waste, TVs, devices with screens, and liquids." All those things used to just to go back in the garbage truck under the common trash fee that they pay. But rules have changed. Items that were once accepted and buried, but now banned from the local landfill. They require special handling, separate trucks, and in some cases, we are charged, we are charged by the commission to dispose of the item. So we're not going to absorb that cost. We're going to pass that on to you by way of, you have to buy trash tags and put it on there, and you gotta call us and get on the schedule, because we have to plan and send a truck and a man out there to pick that item up. Next slide. There is no such thing as a way. When we throw anything away, it must go somewhere. Next slide. This is one of my favorites. "I shouldn't, but I'm going to have the garbage." I love that slide. Next slide. Any questions?
I, I've got one, Don. What do you, and maybe this would be more toward, toward Eric, but the, the two-hundred gallon, or the two-hundred-and-thirty-five-gallon carts, do you think there might be a use for those, that, all the extra ones that we have? Is there maybe use for...
The X, oh, I see.
Yeah. For those, and like, I'm thinking, like, in the city parks or something, we mounted them on stakes, they could use them, or something like that, with the lid on them, versus some of our cans I have? Anything?
I'm not really, I guess I would defer to the parks.
I just put that, I'm looking, looking for an answer, I'm just wondering if there's a use there.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Okay.
Since we've initiated the new cart program, have you, have your workers seen less trash in the neighborhoods along the alleys? Like, my thought was before, when I lived on the south side of town, that I had a neighbor in particular that always had trash out. And my thought was, having everybody have a trash can available is going to clean some of that out. So, has that been?
I, I have asked that question, and the, their general overview is that the alleys are cleaner than they were prior to the cart program. But you still have properties where it hasn't made a difference.
Yeah, this, uh...
But, but there are properties that have, they're, as I said, we probably had, we've had two-hundred people who've upsized to a sixty-five or a ninety-five, and hopefully they're getting their stuff in the cart. But I handled a call from a citizen here probably last week, that was, "Who do I talk to? Where, where do I have to go? I've got a neighbor that just does not put their garbage in their cart. They put their bags on the ground, animals get into it, it's a mess. And their cart isn't full," according to the neighbor.
I, I know, I know it's made a difference on, on our alley, but it was definitely much cleaner, so.
And aesthetically, I think, you know, it's, it's nicer looking. I mean, I don't know, people notice garbage carts, or cans, or bags sitting out on, on the curbside, or when they drive through the alley.
I did, I noticed there's less blowing around than what I've been used to, too.
Yeah, I particularly notice it when I go to other communities, and you see the carts blowing around, and you think, "Oh, thank goodness, that's not Burlington anymore." It does look more streamlined, I think it does. Makes us look more professional and more progressive.
I don't get calls to say, "Hey, you drove over my can, my lid, or you threw my lid away," or anything like that. Now, we have had some carts disappear, but not anything associated with lids disappearing or being driven over. But there are still houses out there that could improve their sanitation of their property to, and would make their neighbors very happy. And there are some yet that, you know, we try to educate and say, gee, if you, if they buy a trash tag, they've just spent that month more than if they just had the next larger can.
Now, can someone rent an extra can for just like one month, if they're cleaning up?
No.
It's gotta be for the, forever, or?
Yeah, forever. That's, that's the way we have it.
Well, it's tough because of all the back and forth. Yeah, they, yeah, it, it is amazing, but like in the example you cited, that they're not putting their trash in their can already, so you don't know. Well, I, I for one, Don, appreciate both budgets coming in with zero change. That helps.
Well, I was listening to Rhonda, and all the things that they do to lower their costs, or for people, you know, and the, the participation of the people in helping them. And I'm thinking, now, what could I say regarding people helping us or improving our programs in wastewater? And I thought, well, we could reduce our costs if we would say, "Even side addresses flush on this day, and the odd side flush on that day." Maybe that. But low flows in sewers can be problematic.
Yeah.
So I usually tell people, "How you can help me is flush twice," because then you got more water going through, and it keeps the solids moving, and they don't stink as much. And then garbage, gee, I don't know what I would say there. I mean, certainly if they would just put it in their cart. I will say that my guys complained that a lot of people are not bagging their garbage, their organic material, like they're supposed to. And the carts get dirty. Of course, you can't really wash a cart in the winter, but in the summer, they've got some, I mean, there's some pretty grody carts out there. But...
Can, can we leave a, you know, when we leave a tag, when there was, like, we used to leave a tag? Maybe we could leave a tag that says, "Cart needs to be washed."
We do have tags to do that, and they have tried that, but, so, you know, push comes to shove.
I wonder if maybe some of the apprehension from them to move from the thirty-three-gallon to the sixty-five is to think it would be bulkier and heavier for them to maneuver. They almost need to go find a neighbor that's got the larger one, and just pull it around for them, see that it actually, actually carries really, really well. It doesn't topple, it's really easy to put stuff in and get stuff out. And I think they'd be, they'd be sold. But I think that's one of the objections.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Jim, do you have anything to add to it?
No.
Okay. Well, Don, I, I don't know what we'd do without you. Thank you very much. How's your time do on that one?
Actually, Don does have a couple.
That is actually longer than our wastewater.
Don does have a couple. He's got a couple of budget items he's looking to move around on the CIP that will adjust, but it's no new projects, it's just changing years on a couple of them, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Midterms.
Yes, you're hoping to be done. We're going to do a midterm. Stephanie had also put out for you, you have a, there's a quiz tonight, Don. It'll be multiple choice, don't worry. Stephanie did give you some additional budget sheets for some general fund activities, like city manager's budget, city council's budget, city clerk, et cetera. Also, some of the special revenue funds, I think, like Bridge Run, a couple of others. And I thought it would be a good time to kind of do a little bit of an overview, again, of where we are and where those fit in. When we do our budgets, we have to divide it by category. The general fund is one category, special revenue funds are another category, the debt service fund is a category, trust and agency is a category, the proprietary funds, such as Don's, are their own category, and capital projects have their own category. So on our budget forms, they'll go into their, each of them will have, we, we do, when we do the state budget forms, those are each a column on the budget form. Well, the first column is the general fund. And we've already had the chance to have the majority of that presented. The fire department gave their presentation, a five-point-eight-million-dollar budget in the general fund. The police department gave their presentation, six-point-seven-million-dollar budget. Public Works will provide their presentation in, just over a week from now, two-point-three million. Culture and Rec, Rhonda's budget was a portion of that, actually about half of that. And the other part will be Eric, and he'll be presenting along with the Development Department. Human Services is just a tiny sliver, twenty-one-hundred dollars. And then Administration, two-point-seven million. We do need to kind of go through that. So overall, but, budget expenditures in a general fund, twenty-four, twenty-one million, four-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, that's including transfers. So, that's, we kind of talked about this at the beginning of the first, first meeting on the budget. That's about six-hundred-and-eighty thousand higher than the previous year. Major categories that are higher. Within Administration, there's a transfer, that's for the hotel motel tax. It's a hundred-and-fifteen thousand higher than the current year's budget. When the fire department gave their presentation, their budget is two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand higher than the current year. And then the police department is two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand higher than the current year. It doesn't, that's, doesn't account for the total increase across the rest of the departments. There's about a seventy thousand overall increase, spread fairly evenly between different departments. A reminder with the hotel motel tax, it is a revenue that we have to receipt into the general fund. We transfer the number out to a separate special revenue fund, the hotel, hotel motel tax fund. From there, it gets dispersed to its underlying categories.
So that number's higher because we brought more in?
We, yes. Our budget, last year, when we were doing budgets, we did a projected revenue of eight-hundred-and-ten thousand of revenues for the hotel motel tax. This year, we're budgeting it at nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Last year, we ended up being, or the current year, we're going to be well above that hundred, eight-hundred-and-ten thousand we'd originally budgeted. Hotel motel has gone through some significant changes over the last few years. We were just, we're right at nine-hundred-and-eighty thousand for annual revenues three years ago or so. Went down to about seven-eighty, and bottomed out there, and have been able to come back up. And the current year, we're looking to be about nine-hundred thousand, but a little bit over nine-hundred thousand, and next year, projecting at nine-twenty-five. But the change in what we budgeted is a hundred-and-fifteen thousand higher for that category. The fire department had their breakdown. This is just sort of a reminder, as Chief Truxell went through his budget, he talked about the, the breakdown in costs between the different divisions. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this stuff, because it's already been done, and you have it there in front of you as well. The police department gave their presentation, and this is sort of a break, again, a breakdown of the costs, their six-point-seven-million-dollar budget. The lion's share of it is in their main division, Patrol. One of the items that they, that Chief didn't get into a tremendous amount was DESCOM. Shannon's going to be here next Thursday to go over their portion of the budget, their six-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand dollars is what we pay towards that. The overall budget for DESCOM, or the dispatch center, is right at a million dollars. So our share of that is just over six-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand dollars. And again, next, next Thursday, Shannon will go over what their, what their budget is, and what's, what, what they, what they do with that, and just an overview of where their operation is. I wouldn't expect a too-long of a presentation on that. Development Department, it's one of the other categories, eight-hundred thousand. Eric has that broken into two pieces, Building Code Administration, and then Community Development. And he'll go through the, the breakdown between the two when he does his presentation. Culture and Rec, Rhonda gave her presentation, one-point-five million of the three-point-one million, almost half of the Culture and Rec category in the general fund. Out of the rest of that, Senior Center and Youth Center, you know, the cost in those areas isn't a tremendous amount. It's a little over eight-thousand dollars, and it's primarily property maintenance charges that we have associated with the Senior Centers building. We have it divided between two categories. The basement was formerly used by the Youth Center, and as we have property maintenance costs that have been associated there, we really don't have somebody to give those costs to. Similar to, as we talked about, the former police building. Chief Kramer is the proud recipient of all the costs that get associated with it, even though he's not using it any longer. The port, you can see here, is a little, Port of Burlington and the riverfront is a little over a hundred-and-twenty thousand for a budget. Primary cost drivers there, utility costs, property insurance costs, property maintenance cost, charges. Property maintenance charges aren't just for the building itself, it's for the entire waterfront. So if you think about snow removal, mowing that has to go on there, other things, putting the docks in, maintaining docks, et cetera, the costs that they have that are associated with those things go into this category. Now, we do reimburse the port for some of that riverfront amount. We transfer out of Hotel Motel fifty-three thousand, I think, in this next upcoming budget, to go to the general fund to cover these riverfront costs. Eric will go over the, the pool, forestry, and park maintenance when he does his presentation. Auditorium, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand. Out of that, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is our contract with, for management services with BRE, Burlington Riverfront Entertainment. That's subject to renewal next December. Other costs that are, that make up the majority of the rest of the costs here, utilities is about fifty-six thousand, insurance is about ten thousand, and property maintenance charges, twenty-six thousand. And then, what's left of it is a combination of different maintenance, supply, and equipment costs. We anticipate, similar to having Shannon from DESCOM come next Thursday, we, is Mike, is it Mike O'Neill is going to be here, next Thursday as well, to give just an update of where, where they stand and what they're accomplishing for the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that they pay, or that we pay them to manage that. And as a reminder, before we get to the end of the month, we're going to have a proposal from someone else, looking to potentially take over operation of that facility with a... a different concept of how that would happen. And that's something that we need to keep in mind with, with this budget, where that would potentially fit in. That's just something to have there at the, as a, in your thought process as we move forward. It's certainly not what we're budgeting. We're budgeting as if we're moving forward with BRE under the same type of terms. Human services expenses, it's at $22,000. We have a portion that we set aside for Potter's Field and then Human Rights Commission. Those are fairly steady from year to year, not a significant amount. Within Public Works expenditures, a lot of these are things that Nick will cover in his presentation. But if you look here, out of the $2.3 million approximately expended, expended in Public Works in the general fund, 1.1 million is public transit. Out of that, they have revenues of 872,000 to cover their costs. 773,000, that is state and federal grants. 3,400 from West Burlington. 3,500 in advertising revenue, and then ridership revenue of 92,000. We have a transit system property tax levy that covers about $180,000 of the remaining costs. And that leaves another 50,000 that's covered by just other general property taxes collected. Within the engineering department, 580,000. Nick will go over that budget as, as part of his presentation. But about 370,000 of that, we offset by allocating out their time and effort towards capital projects that we have budgeted, whether that's in the sewer department, in trails, in streets, et cetera. Public Works Administration with a $200,000 budget. We do a transfer of $75,000 from road use tax, one of our special revenues, to cover road, road system related costs for, from the Public Works Administration. Similarly, with the Public Works building itself, 147,000. We do a transfer from road use tax of $65,000 for the, for their use of that facility, covering a portion of the costs there. Depot expenditures, 66,000 is in the budget. You know, the majority of that, our items like 14,000 towards cleaning charges, 20,000 utility costs, insurance costs of 2,500, property maintenance costs of 22,000. And the rest is various supply items and minor repairs. We are able to now start to offset at least a portion of these costs. 14,000 that we received from Amtrak for lease of the facility. And one that Nick I know will not cover would be the airport. Mary was here talking about the airports budget. The majority of things, we don't really get too involved in their day-to-day operations, but we do cover a portion, a significant portion of their operating budget. We have a 2080 agreement with West Burlington and Des Moines County to provide an allocation to them to cover their operational costs. Our portion of that, based on a levy that we've had in place to do that, is, we, we have a levy about 161,000. And we pay to the airport that 161,000 in that neighborhood for their operational expenses. The remainder of the, the costs in the airport fund, 170, to get up to 170,000, we do have some minor costs associated with property maintenance. The other is insurance costs that we have. General fund expenditures, this is the one that you do have the actual line item sheets for. And just going through here, in the general fund, out of the 2.7 million of expenditures, 925,000 of that is the transfer of the hotel motel tax. It's the largest share. Next is computer operations. We transfer from local option sales tax, 140,000 a year, into the general fund. And then out of the general fund here in the computer operations, we spend that 140,000. That's spent on items such as computer replacement across the system, servers, buying new servers, software subscriptions, new software programs, and then just general network expenditures. And one, and another example that we mentioned the other day, when we did upgrades in here, that was done out of this 140,000 allocation. Personnel costs, we have two people within our IT department. Personnel costs are totaled at 225,000. So you add that to the 140,000 for equipment-type expenditures, there isn't a tremendous amount left. Risk management is a category at 164,000 is for property and liability insurance. We budget, we are budgeting about a 10% increase in expenditures in this category. And it matches what we basically receive for the current year. And kind of expect that to happen again this next year. Out of that 164,000, we have a levy specifically for risk management that generates about 142,000 of revenue. City Hall maintenance at 50,000. Those are basic, basically property maintenance charges, utilities, and a variety of supplies and basic repairs. Executive administration at the 260. Out of that, personnel costs for my, myself and half of Katie's position is 250,000 of the budget. Out of the remainder of it, I did increase, the one increase that's in here is increasing travel expenses. Increase that by about 1,500. I just, I'm gonna have to attend a few more meetings this next year. I get to represent the City Managers Association. And as my, my role, I'm supposed to be president unless they decide not to do that. If I'm gonna do that, I just need to make sure to attend a couple more meetings than what I have this here. City Council budget, it's pretty even from the current year. Items and note that have changed, in the current year, we have some funds set aside for doing a goal-setting session. We typically do that every other year. We don't have funds set aside next year's budget for that. And I did increase travel here by about 1,500. Basically, the current, this last year, we had a little bit higher travel expenses than we'd had the couple of years previous. Just composition of council, you got a little bit different attendance to being involved in different meetings. Personnel services is not, not significantly different than the current year, but 60,000, about 48,000 of that is costs associated with one 29-hour-per-week part-time employee that we have in, in HR. Legal services, 150,000, is 20,000 higher, significant amount higher. The reason for that is, is it will be bargaining contracts this next year. And we just know that our costs are gonna be, be a little bit higher. City clerk, doesn't have any significant changes there. Out of that 186,000, 187,000 budget, about 153,000 of its personnel. Out of the, the rest of it, 16,000 is for publications. You think about publish, publishing our ordinances, public notices, et cetera, minutes. That all comes into that category. One thing that will not be in next year's budget is any election expenses that we had in the current year's budget. Finance administer, administration is Stephanie's area. Out of the 150,000 budget, 145,000 is personnel-related costs. Accounting includes the accounting manager in that, as well as two accounting clerks to perform, you know, essentially all accounts payable, accounts receivable, processing all claims. And all of payroll comes through that department. 267,000 of their budget is personnel. 70,000 of the remainder is for audit services for the software system, annual licensing fees. That's all the general fund stuff. Special revenue fund is, so if you think of one bucket being the general fund, now you have the special revenue fund is the next bucket over. And it has, as a special, special revenue funds are all funds that are designated towards a specific topic. So each of them is really its own bucket, but they're all kinda pooled together as well. But we have to make sure that we're tracking them separately. As we go through the special revenue funds, we've, we did a breakdown of local option sales tax the other day, as, as did we with the hotel motel tax, those two portions. We will have, Nick will go through the street department budget as we get to that. A lot of the others are, well, we have a couple others we'll get to, get to tonight here. Internet charges. We do an allocation, 31,000 that we put into the budget. Any costs that we have associated with our internet system, our phones, general phone system for, that we can't really allocate out to a specific department, we expense here, in the way that we cover it, we do a charge to all the various departments for every computer that they have, a per, like a per-computer charge. We pool it over into this internet fund, and then we pay those generalized expenses out of that. And then we have an ongoing balance that comes out of there. Special assessment, that 10,000 is for previous projects that have gone on, and people are paying them off through an assessment. As we collect those on an annual basis, at the end of the year, we'll sweep the money out of that special assessment account, and it will go into our capital, our main capital account for street projects. And so we budgeted that, we just kind of anticipate about 10,000 to be received this next year. Whatever the amount is, we'll clear out and move over into that capital account to be used on future street projects. Bridge run at 15,000. That, that covers the cost of the bridge run itself, but also the, as they do collections through that, they end up doing a special project in the parks. I think Eric can kinda cover what they're anticipating to do for a project this upcoming year out of that. But that allows the funds that are raised from the bridge run itself to, to be expensed out to that named project in the park system. Employee benefits, we have a levy that's specifically for employee benefits, property tax levy. It covers Social Security, FICA, IFRS, the 411 system costs, health insurance, the 2.5 and we're allowed to collect that special levy to cover those types of costs that are in, specifically in the general fund. We have to collect them in the special revenue fund. Then we transfer those to the general, general fund to support the general fund. If we were to put a levy out here for all of our employee benefits associated with employees in the general fund, our, we could have a levy that was, we could collect over, a little over 5 million. This is part of where we're able to say, with local option sales tax, using half of the revenue over there towards property tax relief. Instead of taxing the full amount of what we could under employee benefits, we transfer in from local option sales tax to cover a portion of, of those employee benefits. Emergency levy is another special levy that we collect on an ongoing basis that we, that's designed to, when the, the general 810 levy is not enough to cover your operating costs, you're allowed to do an emergency level levy. It's a, I think, 27 cent, I can't remember what the actual levy amount is, but it raises 217,000. It's collected in the special account over here, and then we transfer to the general fund. You see SMID there for 80,000, self-supported municipal improvement district. It's a area of the downtown, where the property owners downtown voted to put in a, a special levy to, to do activities to promote the downtown area. We collect those taxes and then transfer them to Downtown Partners Incorporated as a nonprofit, or the piece of the Greater Burlington Partnership to promote the downtown. Other components. Road use tax, that 3.5 million. Street maintenance is the bulk of that, 1.7 million of it. Traffic signs, public lighting, 625,000 of it. Snow removal budget, we have a, we set aside about 330,000 annually for snow removal. And then we do transfers out, 790,000. I mentioned a couple of those that go to the general fund. We transfer the 75,000 over to support Public Works building. Since I didn't have notes here, I'm gonna miss this, but it's either 75,000 for the building and 65 for Public Works Administration, or just the opposite in the general fund. Out of the remainder of it, we transfer 400,000 to... Since I did, I thought I had these notes written down, but 400,000 goes into the, not, the Steel Coat. And then we do 50,000 into the ADA Transition Plan annually. And the miscellaneous street repairs, we've been bonding for that in the past, about 200,000 a year. We changed that this year and are moving that to being a transfer out of road use tax, over to do, into a separate capital line item to do street repair projects. I know we already had gone through local option sales tax. Out of that 4.6 million plus, most, most of it is basic local option sales tax usage, but we do commit 50,000 that we provide to the Bs. That's for them to do capital projects on an annual basis. They are certainly welcome to do more than 50,000 of improvements to the facility out there, but we're providing them that base support of 50,000 towards it each year. And we have a side account with, within lost for economic development activities. 50,000 is what we're allocating to that in this next year. Out of that remaining, 4,560,000, we have a transfer to debt service of 91,000. Back in 2011, 2012, we refinanced Bs note for a project that they had done, and we're covering their, covering their payments on that. 91,000 is the payment that is due in FY '21. That note will have its final payment made in FY '23. We do a general fund transfer of 2.3 million, 2,327,500 to, for property tax relief. It helps us to offset employee benefits, keeping from raising taxes for that. We transfer the general fund out of the local option sales tax, 862,641 for personnel in the police department. We transfer another 275,000 or so for capital equipment to the general fund for the police department's capital equipment. And kinda talked about their, the IT support that comes out of local option sales tax as well, 140,000 annually. The remainder, we do another 873,000 of transfers to RecPlex golf fund and a variety of capital funds to cover the cost of equipment and infrastructure projects. infrastructure projects. All those projects were listed in the CIP plan, totaled eight hundred thousand of the overall four point six million dollars of local option sales tax revenue. The hotel motel, projecting nine hundred and twenty-five thousand of revenue, expenditures at nine hundred and fifteen thousand. Three hundred thousand of that goes to Convention and Tourism Bureau, or Visitors Bureau. It helps them to cover the cost of operating the welcome center and to do a variety of promotional activities around the community. We have a three-year agreement with them. The current agreement that we have expires the end of June twenty twenty-one. We anticipate that we would be renegotiating what the renewal of that agreement would look like moving forward. We set aside thirty thousand annually in here for the auditorium for capital expenditures that need to occur there. We set aside fifty-three thousand for the riverfront. That's a transfer to the general fund to cover the costs at the port slash riverfront that we mentioned earlier. Parks allocation of sixty thousand is specifically for putting money into a trail maintenance capital fund and buying park equipment as well as one piece of Recplex equipment and one lighting project out there for seventy-five hundred, I think. Cultural assistance at twelve thousand, or twenty-one thousand, covers allocations that we have for the Art Guild, Capitol Theater, Burlington Municipal Band and the Symphony. We do this, we budget essentially the same amounts that we had last year and kind of have, have an anticipation of those being the same moving forward. The special projects is the other bulk of this, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Unfortunately, that goes to some big bulk pieces. A hundred and eighty thousand of that we transfer to the general fund to cover park maintenance, forestry, swimming pool and, and recreational programming costs. We transfer a hundred and sixty thousand to the Recplex for their operating deficit. We're budgeting to transfer fifty-five thousand to the golf course to cover their operating deficit. Have twenty-two hundred and fifty allocated for renewable energy committee that they can make some recommendations to bring forward to council with how to spend money, some notable projects that they've done in the past, the, the solar array down at the port as a demonstration project and they did the charging stations at the city parking lot and got some cooperation from Hy-Vee out at the casino and then out with the community college for some other charging stations as well. And we have an allocation in here, six thousand dollars for the bridge run project match. I didn't put the total here. The main piece here, our consolidated TIF where the majority of the revenues goes in is that two million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Majority of that, twenty thousand of that, we do a transfer to the general fund to cover Eric's portion of my costs, a portion of our attorney costs that we'll have as we do a variety of TIF projects. For example, the Merge project, we've had to incur some costs from Bob Johnston's with Dorsey and Whitney to make sure that we are getting any documents done appropriately in a way that it satisfies TIF conditions, tax increment financing conditions. The rest of that two point, the other two point eight million dollars is a transfer to debt service fund to cover the cost of previous projects that are financed with The other items that are up there and are rebate agreements that we have, we have four different rebate agreements. Wine Guard was a ten-year agreement, it was for an expansion of their facility at the Fort, the Montgomery Wards mall area. We are fiscal twenty-one, we're budgeting for is year seven of that ten-year agreement. They've received five hundred and forty-five thousand through the end of last year and we're budgeting for them to receive in a hundred and fifty thousand this next year. They receive, under that ten-year agreement, they got seventy-five percent of the new value created for the first five years and then the second five years was fifty percent of the value. Grow Greater Burlington Partnership, they had built a spec building out in the industrial park. We helped with the sale at, at a substantial discount. They sold that mu, much below their construction costs. We helped to cover that with the, with the rebate. It's a ten-year, hundred percent rebate on that building. Fiscal twenty-one is year eight of that and they're anticipating to receive and, we're budgeting for them to receive fifty thousand anyway in year eight. To date, the first seven, or first six years, they received a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Burlington Crossing, the former manor site, was a twelve-year rebate agreement, first year, six years at a hundred percent, the second six years at eighty percent. Fiscal twenty-one is year three, so fiscal nineteen was the first payment that was actually made to them. They received fifty thousand in the first year and we're budgeting for them at two sixty in fiscal twenty-one. And then Park West, the housing subdivision, it was, that we did a TIF rebate agreement on, that's a ten-year agreement. They get the, all that they're allowed to get, which is about sixty percent of the rebate amount. Forty percent we have to set in, we're, we'll set aside in a low to moderate income housing fund. We'll, we don't have anything budgeted this next year, given that we're only budgeting five thousand for Park West portion, we're not at a position where we're ready to do anything of any significance with the revenue that would be there in fiscal twenty-one. Anticipate seeing a project come forward in, in a subsequent year. And a final thing that we have are some of the targeted jobs projects that have occurred. With job creations that have occurred over the last few years, the targeted jobs, they get to set aside a portion of their payroll taxes. They, essentially through the agreement that they have with the state, the employers send a check to us for that percentage of payroll taxes and we turn around and cut a check back to them for the same amount. Some funky system that the state ends up with, it's a, for us, it's a wash, it's a pay-in and a payout, but we set aside for the four current projects that we have going. You see Case New Holland is set aside for six hundred thousand, Silicon, three hundred thousand, Shears at twenty thousand and Wine Guard at fifty thousand. Would anticipate that our overall total should be a little below it, but it kind of depends on where their employment numbers are in any given year. That's sort of a, a lot of these are flow-throughs, but they are a piece of the budget and we, we do expense them in here, so you need to understand that they are a part of it, but these are not things where the actual expenditure is something that is a major decision on your part, if that makes sense. This is an add-on tonight, I gave you a bonus.
Jim, I don't, I don't know if anybody else this would help, but if you had a list of what the current budget that you have it, you know, have designed and then what each department wants extra, do you have anything like that? That would, it would be just, you know, like, police department, I had budgeted this amount, they were asking for this much more for these things.
No, the police department didn't necessarily have what they asked for in addition, they gave you a list of different, as you looked at different positions, what they would potentially cost to do them. So it's kind of a, as they did, that's, that's one where it's kind of hard to know where to go on that part.
And I choose the police department as an example, but when we get done with the whole process, could we have something like that that would show, do you guys know what I'm saying?
Do you want to know what the difference is going to be between?
Yeah, so far you've been presented with the Rhonda and Don and the fire chief have all been balanced, there's no loss of personnel, there's no additional personnel. The chief, the, the chief did say on his wish list he would like to have a couple people, so that's, that's where we're at.
That's, and that's why I'd just like to have some kind of, when we're all done.
Yeah.
Because you, we need to figure out where the money's going to come from if we want to give them some goodies, so to speak.
Or just to see how it's going to line up.
Yeah, I think that's why Jim was kind of doing this, this midterm. To be honest with you, I asked, I asked him some questions after, after last meeting because I, I mean, this is my third one and I had a couple things that I got confused on, so I think that's why you, you've done this, but I think we can get together and discuss that.
Okay.
So, it's, I think, well, guess what, he got out of here, so we might get out of here. I think that, I, I think he was done, did he have anything else on his computer over there? All right. Were you done, sir? Were you done?
All depends on what you want to see. I would pull up one thing, can you pull up the city's website for a second?
Oh, winter pitcher, oh.
It's hard for a guy that lives on the river to look at that. OpenGov, openGov. So on the bottom of the city's website, one of those tags, tags was openGov. We have gotten the, the current year's budget in here. If you go and look at, if you go down the, the left-hand side, the second one there, or let's see, let's go to the fourth one, general fund expenditures, including transfers. You can get an idea and you can click on the expenditures for this year, you can see that it's, how much of that is personnel, how much is contractual services, how much miscellaneous expense, commodities, capitalway and debt service. But you'll get, look through the data in a few different ways in here. I think one of the tabs, yeah, you can look at it both in a graph and then below, you can look at a chart.
Okay.
And with a lot of the ones, as he was showing you up above with that chart, if you click, you can drill down to its underlying pieces, components. So if you go back over to the left, it gives you different views that you can do. This is a, that's a general fund, I think there's another general fund by department if you go farther down that list. That's general fund costs, that's personnel costs for, by department and there should be a, here you can see how the general fund is broken up into different areas. Public safety, you'll see fire components and the police components and then half of Eric's department building is in there. Culture and rec, you'll see the primary piece of, is library, but then the breakdown between the other main components in there. Within, say you click on the library. Nope, it doesn't give a breakdown by classification, does it? Then you get a few other views over there. You can see details of expenses for the swimming pool. Actually, you do have right above it the default detail for expenses at the library. You can see two up proprietary funds. So proprietary funds, now you can get an idea of what's, most of those are sewer funds. A lot of those are capital projects within the sewer funds, but then you also do have two components, sort of the golf course and three that are the Recplex. So you can get an idea of where the different pieces are, you can go, you can look at it in a variety of different ways. To your question, Bill, I mean, we, the, the departments were, chief, I don't want to try to overspeak for you. I mean, they understand that you, things go where they will and you can use several more employees, you'd certainly find a way to use them. You can do, make do with where you're at. If you had the staff, the, the resources available and given to you, you would use them and you could do it in a variety of ways, but it kind of depends on how much this group is, would be willing to do. And I, I don't know if you have an order or priority for how those positions would lay out. I would assume that maybe your POP unit and then your investigations unit are the first two, but that's up to you to kind of speak to a little bit.
It would probably be opposite, it would probably be, our narcotics unit would probably be where I would go first and then our POP unit. And I'm still looking at some potential funding that's coming available to enhance that POP unit also, but it's just, it's going to be, it won't be announced until after this budget's set. And if I apply for those, a certain grants and, and if we're awarded anything, it wouldn't be announced afterwards and I don't even know if we'd qualify for them, to be honest with you, at this point. It just came out, the announcement of it came out earlier this week and I still need time to talk to the people that run those programs or run those grants to even see if we would qualify. So it, it, there's a potential there, but I don't want to say for sure that it's there, but those are programs, but I would probably do the narcotics task force enhancement position before the POP unit at this point, if it was coming from this direction. So just because of the need that's there, I saw some, I saw some personnel that were spread pretty thin in that division last year during a major investigation and, and they definitely use the help and it would be well-used, so.
But the other thing is though, you do have six officers coming off, coming off training, so that should help this year. Now, I do remember saying in past budgets, because there was some discussion by, I think, Matt about one officer's chief. I thought I remembered, maybe it was Chief Beard, maybe it was you, my mind is turning to mush, but about one officer versus two as far as the shifts and how it, if you, if you don't have a balanced shift, how it makes it a little difficult, is that still a concern?
It does, we have a, a minimum strength of four officers and there's one command person on, on each, each shift that, that runs and that's a twelve-hour shift. So we run with a minimum of four. If there's not four, if we have three, for some reason someone's out on extended leave for an injury or something and, or someone calls in sick or we have two people sick. And this is with, with six assigned per squad. So if we have a person on vacation and somebody's sick, that puts us down to four, but if we have two people sick and then we have somebody gone on military and then somebody on vacation, you see how it depletes out randomly throughout the year, a squad. So with that added personnel, we'd still run with a four, four officer minimum and a, and a shift commander, so, but there would be times when there would be six available, you know, if everybody's here, healthy and not on vacation. So there's times with that. Right now I have a couple squads that are down to run them with five and sometimes during the summer we, we try to even them out with six and five on days and six and five on nights. Then when we start losing personnel off patrol, I'll bring them out of investigations or back from the school and just make sure that that's, our obligation there is filled.
Okay.
So that's what I would do.
Chief, you had said we could come in and observe that information gathering position, I can't remember what you called that.
Evidence tech.
Evidence tech.
Evidence tech, yeah.
Is that still open?
Yeah.
Okay, just touch base with you and line something up.
Yes, yes, I'll get you connected with her and she can kind of explain what she does.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm interested and I understand more about it if I actually observed firsthand.
Okay. No trouble, just give me a call.
So, and part of where I have a hard time knowing how to address your question, Bill, we kind of presented two different options or things that we saw for where staffing needs were. The one here with the police department with a variety of different things where they could move through looking at additional staffing occurring. The other one that we, that I had had as a priority was getting a position on, in Nick's division to, for transit and probably about half, probably looking at that being a position that you would do halftime transit, halftime engineering. that you would do halftime transit, halftime engineering department. That position is about an $85,000 annual cost for, is that what we had said stuff? And then like 90,000 for, within chief's budget, as you look at, whether you're looking at adding a, somebody into Investigations, into the POP unit, putting them out on patrol, those are, any of those are gonna be 90,000.
Yes.
And you're still gonna put them through the same training program, your first year costs are gonna be 110,000 range. It's kind of up to, so if you, you could have a discussion about one, two, three positions, you could have a discussion about, if you're looking at, money's no object, doing the Investigations POP, and then maybe making the, your evidence tech, moving that from a part-time to a full-time position as another, I think that was, was that 35 or 55? 55,000 additional costs. That being said, Fire Department would love to have, they see needs where they could add another position, they need a training person. I didn't even consider that, 'cause I have, and Library has positions that they had cut that they'd love to get back, and so those are the ones that I'm kinda, when you ask, ask that question, every department would like more staff.
Well, I mean, what, I, I think this has become more than what I just, what I, I really wanted to see was, if they were proposing more than what the budget was, where was it in it, and, and how?
We don't have, the, what's been proposed in the budget is existing staffing. There is not a single
Increase.
Increase of staffing anywhere in the numbers. If you wanna, we, we tried to have it so that you had a balanced budget with your existing staffing levels.
That's, that's basically what I was asking.
Okay. Sorry, dude. Go farther than that.
Anything else? Do you have any questions answered? Well, you'll, you'll have more.
Yeah, no, I understand, I, I.
A final
It's good.
A final thing on the, what's on the website with OpenGov. We quickly got that out there today. Don't expect, don't, don't think of that as a polished document. We will probably have some adjustments made to that as we move through the next week or so, but it's pretty close.
This isn't, this isn't a normal work session. I did meet with Lieutenant Jolly from the Salvation Army. He has an opening on his advisory board, essentially, on email. He's looking for one of us to possibly serve on that board, so let me know if you're interested. If no one else is interested, I am available, I can do it. It meets the first Wednesday of the month. But we need to give him an answer, so.
Okay. Which one is it?
Salvation Army.
Maybe.
Yeah. I know. Is that it for the night, then? Okay, Jim, you're done? Everybody's ready to go? Don's got his hat on, I got my hat on, let's get out of here. Thank you very much.